Council office and Teresa has some as well. Call the first item, please.
All right, first is our public hearing consent agenda, items one through thirteen.
Anyone wishing to speak on any of these items, please come forward. Seeing none, next item, please.
All right, we can vote on these items then. Items one and seven through ten were introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
By Carl. Discussion. All right, call the roll, please.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp. Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then are our public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. Applicants or witnesses are not required to stay for the voting session. I'll call item fourteen, manage your application of Kelly Gim for Levy Premium Food Service LP, doing business as Levy Restaurants at Haymarket Park at four oh three Line Drive Circle. Just raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Step over to the microphone over here, thank you.
Just state your name and address.
My name is Kelly Michael Gim, address being four oh three Line Drive Circle, Lincoln, Nebraska, six eight five oh eight.
All right, tell us about your application.
Just applying to take over as the manager down with the Lincoln Salt Dogs for Haymarket Park. We're transferring over companies from Levy Restaurants into new management, just revising the application to sell liquor for this season.
Okay, questions? Cindy.
Did you take your class yesterday?
Yes, I did.
Oh, actually it was last week, wasn't it?
It was on the tenth.
Okay, good, thank you very much.
Other questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Wishing to speak to this item, please come forward. All right, next item, please.
All right, next is item fifteen, manage your application of Ronald Svasak for C E C Entertainment, doing business as Chuck E. Cheese's at two twenty-one North Sixty-sixth Street. We do have a request to delay public hearing for one week to March twenty-first. Do you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Tell us about your application.
I'm the new general manager for Chuck E. Cheese since last October and they need to renew their license, so here I am.
Okay. And the delay in action is because?
Uh, just got some information back from.
Okay. John, did you have a question?
I was gonna say, is the delay at our request then?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted, since you're here, all right. Madam Chair, I, Mr. Chair, excuse me, I would move, we delayed action on this one week.
Okay, do we have, let's wait on voting to the delay if there's anybody that needs to speak on this item.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that'd be fine.
Do we have any more questions for this gentleman?
No.
All right, thank you, sir. One else wishing to speak to this item, please come forward. I'll second John's motion then. Okay. Motion is for a one-week delay on action here. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Did you want public hearing with that?
Yes.
Yes. And then I'd move approval of item fourteen.
Second. Second by Roy, discussion. All right, call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then are our public hearing resolutions, item sixteen, accepting the report of new impending claims against the city and approving disposition of claims set forth for the period of February sixteen through twenty-nine, two thousand sixteen.
All right, anyone here wishing to speak to a claim, please come forward. Anybody to speak to a claim? If you have a claim, please come forward.
Good afternoon, John Hoppy, thirty forty-four Bonicum, Lincoln. I have a unit at thirteen thirty-five thirty-seven North Twentieth and there was a homicide earlier this year outside of the unit. Our, my manager of the property was in touch with Officer Kathy Phillips and she was talking about the unit and who was involved with it. It was thirteen thirty-seven. At some time during that time that they were visiting, they were visiting, the police decided to break down the door at thirteen thirty-five, which was really not involved in the issue at all. And so I'm asking that the city pay for those damages.
Questions for John.
For five hundred dollars, I'm not gonna take too much of your time. Is there any questions?
Questions for John. Jane.
John, is it a duplex, is that how it happened, could they?
It's a duplex, yes. And the, the people that were involved in the homicide were in thirty, thirteen thirty-seven and the officer knew that. But for some reason they decided to break down the door at thirty, thirteen thirty-five. And then they didn't notify us at all, which would have been better because our tenant came home at midnight, the door was busted in and still open, and she was terrified. So.
Other questions? Cindy?
So there was, there was no one home at thirteen thirty-five?
There was nobody home at thirteen thirty-five until about midnight. And the police didn't tell us so that we could go down and secure it or, and they've been in contact with my property manager during that time.
And so I guess I wonder how you knew that they knew that there was only the people from thirteen thirty-seven who were involved?
Because they were calling us to ask us the names of the tenants and who, and they associated the thirteen thirty-seven person with the homicide.
And that was before they broke into either one or?
They didn't have to break in the other one because the tenants were there.
Okay.
And I don't know whether it was before or after.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you, appreciate your consideration.
Staff questions, Jeff?
Jeff Crapater, City Attorney.
Roy. Jeff, we'd asked to delay this item. Could you tell us more about what went on, we've already heard from Mr. Hoppy what went on from their perspective. What do you know from LPD's point of view?
Well, there was a, it was, I think the claim actually involves thirteen thirty-seven. The body was in front of thirteen thirty-five. There were brass shell casings in front of thirteen thirty-seven. And there was nobody at home in thirteen thirty-seven. I wouldn't dispute much of what Mr. Hoppy has said. Police arrived, there was a dead body, there were gunshots in front of one door. The, the shell casings were in front of the other door. There was no one home at the other door, or at least no one responded. And so what the police officers did as part of the investigation is, felt they had a responsibility to clear not only the, the door that the body was in front of, but the building next door, the house next door, the duplex, because the shell casings were in front of that door. To, so to make sure there weren't any other victims in that thirteen thirty-seven or the shooter himself or herself in thirteen thirty-seven. That's why they broke down the door, to clear the building.
And the basis on which we're denying this claim?
If there, if we make a mistake, if we respond, for example, to the fire department, the police department, somebody calls in and says, there's something going on in thirteen thirty-five and we break down thirteen thirty-seven because we misread the address, then we pay those claims. If what we're doing is, um, there's been a call for someone, a safety check and nobody comes to the door, if there's smoke and nobody comes to the door, or in this case, as part of an investigation where you're clearing the surrounding, the area around the crime, uh, crime scene, then we don't pay. Our recommendation of the council is that the police department was not negligent and therefore we shouldn't be paying for the damage.
Okay, so tell me about what kind of precedent we have if we pay, decide to pay for this.
If we decide to pay for this, what we're doing is then paying for property damage that we committed in a circumstance where the fire department or the police department was not at fault, was not negligent. Was just doing what they do, which is attempting to save lives, investigate crime scenes and so on. There is, I mean, it does seem counterintuitive. There's no question that we broke down the door, in this case it was a very well-built, expensive door. The question is whether we were, has been up to this point, whether or not the City of Lincoln's personnel were negligent. Now, we would say we were not negligent, we had an obligation to investigate the crime, to protect the neighborhood by making sure there wasn't a shooter in this building, which was right in front where the brass was found. If you determine that, well, we did cause the damage, whether it was negligent or not, we're gonna pay, then it, it kind of opens the door to, anytime we cause damage through non-negligent actions, we will pay. And that's a pretty wide door to open.
Jane?
Jeff, um, does law enforcement have a policy of notifying any property owner? It seems like they were in touch with the property manager, but shouldn't they have followed up and said, by the way, somebody better come out and, and take care of this door, it's open?
Um, I can't speak to that. I, I know that sometimes if there's no one home, then they may have had some difficulty ascertain who it was. In this case, Mr. Hoppy says they were in touch with his, his manager. So apparently they did have some idea of, of who lived there. It's not a complaint I've heard before, but I couldn't tell you what their standard operating procedure is.
John?
Under, under the city's policy, how far of a perimeter would this policy extend? That, you know, say there was another home that wasn't that far removed, but they're in that vicinity and they're trying to do this safety check.
You know, I couldn't speak to what their standard operating procedure is. My guess is, it's a matter of context. And when you have the, the actual gun casing, the, the shell casings in front of the door of thirteen thirty-seven, it's basically a crime scene, that door. And if someone is involved and they're, they're standing in front of maybe the door they live in and shooting someone, you're gonna check out that, that domicile. But as far as a blanket statement, I couldn't say, and I suspect the police department couldn't tell you that they have a, a perimeter that they always follow either.
Carl.
Jeff, do you have a photo or a sketch of the scene at all?
I just have a picture of the side of the door and it's broken.
What I was curious about was the proximity of the two doors. Is this a duplex where there are two central doors, just a few feet apart?
And I don't know that, that was probably something that Mr. Hoppy could answer better than I.
About twenty feet apart.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else here to speak to a claim, please come forward. All right, we'll move on to the next item.
I'll call items seventeen and eighteen together. They are special permit one seven six two E, application of Pine Lake Development to amend the Vintage Heights Community Unit Plan to increase the number of dwelling units from nine hundred sixty-four to nine hundred ninety on property generally located at South Ninety-eighth and Old Cheney Road. And approving the Vintage Heights C U P Pump Station and Force Main Agreement between the city and Pine Lake Development, associated with the special permit regarding the pump station and force main to be conveyed to and operated by the city to sewer eighty-five additional dwelling units within the existing Vintage Heights C U P.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, I'm Mark Hunziker, appearing on behalf of Pine Lake Development LLC, the developer of Vintage Heights. This project is one that actually started back in nineteen ninety-seven and was developed over a long period of time. And a small portion of it, a piece of about thirty-five and a half acres, has been left out because it could not be sewed by gravity flow sewer. Over the twenty-odd years we've been dealing with this project, the area has built out. There are new arterial streets on both sides of the project. There's a school site within Stone Throw. And we think that this is an opportunity for the city to bring in approximately twenty-five million dollars in assessed valuation at zero cost. The developer has agreed to pay for not only the construction of a pump station and force main, but also for the maintenance expense over a period of thirty years. I personally think that it will not be anywhere near thirty years by the time we hopefully have a gravity flow sewer built to that point. But it is, it is possible that, that things can bog down over time. And so we have, we have agreed to pay the present value of that maintenance at a rate which I think is more than fair and to pay that upfront prior to the issuance of any occupancy per, or building permits on any of these properties. Just to give you an idea, a little more graphic idea, this, the, the graphics in the staff report are really hard to read.
There we go.
This is properly oriented, this is Old Cheney Road, Ninety-eighth Street. And the property involved is within the dash lines here. The site plan that's being approved is not this exact site plan, but it is a site plan which was submitted with our application, uh, which is substantially the same. It is the same number of lots, they are all single-family lots. They're approximately the same dimensions, but there have been some very minor adjustments made between the one that was submitted with the application and this one. This one will be in accordance with the application that's before you and so that we will be going forward with a final plat on this site plan within a short time. Again, I, you know, when this project was, was originally approved, it was agreed that these lots, this area would not be served. And at that time, there was no policy with respect to lift stations. Within a fairly short time after the city did adopt a policy and except in a couple of, except in the case that, that was designed for the policy or the policy was designed to accept, um, it has, it has had variations of the policy tenants in each and every case that it's been applied. This one is unique in that it is all inside the city limits already. It is called out as tier one A in the comprehensive plan. And again, um, all the infrastructure is in place. There is no cost to the city in bringing this project in, into production. And the, the benefit is to increase the city's assessed valuation by about twenty-five million dollars. I try to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? And then Jane.
Yeah, yes, Mr. Hunziker, thank you. Uh, and I appreciate your giving the history because it has gone through a lot of steps. On the, the station itself, assuming kind of a worst-case scenario, let's say that there was a failure and Stevens Creek isn't open in that vicinity for thirty-five years and you've got a present value amount, what if for some reason it went higher? Is that a potential, on this agreement, would that fall on the city?
Would it, you mean if, if the, if the length of time went longer than thirty years?
Not so much the time, but say maintenance or some major repair?
Um, well, yes. The, the, the amount of money that's being paid is, is a lump sum to the city to cover that maintenance expense for a, for that thirty-year period. We had fairly long discussions about how much that might be and how much it ought to be. How often things like pumps go out, how often things like generators go out, which is very rare. But we have built in replacements for all those things along the way. And, um, in addition to that, please keep in mind that all of these lots will continue to pay sewer and water charges to the City of Lincoln over the entire period of time. So it's not as if there won't be more money coming in over that period of time if there are additional maintenance costs.
And then my second question is, and you may have said it, how many lots are anticipated?
I think this is eighty-five. And the, the density is approximately two point three units per acre.
Would there ever be a possibility of wanting to annex something else that could be served by the pump station? Or is this pretty much it?
Um, no, I think this is it for serving this, this particular, using this pump station. Just to show you on the site plan. Here we go. Pump station is located on an outlot right here, where it's this small yellow outlot. And so there's no, there's no additional property to the west of Ninety-eighth Street that could be served. If the city chose to move the pump station to the east, that would be downgrade toward the Stevens Creek Trunk Sewer. It's possible that some additional property might be served. However, I think that the Public Works Department would say, we're not so sure there's any capacity to do that. And we had some, we did have to do some studies to make sure that there was additional, adequate capacity to serve these lots. And it was, it was not, it was not all that close, but it was close enough that if you were adding any significant number, it would be very close.
Thank you. Jane?
Mr. Hunziker, my question is something similar to John's about the longevity of the pump station itself. You know, for those thirty years, the responsibility for cost and maintenance installation will be borne by the developer, but talk a little bit about what happens after year thirty? And if?
Well, if, if, if the city does not bring the gravity flow sewer up the Stevens Creek watershed in a, in a way that I think is reasonably anticipated, then the city would simply still have the maintenance responsibility for this lift station. But keep in mind, each of these homeowners will be paying sewer and water charges every month over the entire thirty-year period that they're already covered for. And they'll continue to pay those charges after that. So the city will have a stream of revenue that should cover any, any issues as far as maintenance on this pump station. I mean, the city maintains, I wanna say thirteen of these pump stations. And they have a pretty good idea of what it costs to maintain them. And so I'm assuming that they would not have agreed to this agreement had they not been comfortable that the amount of money we're paying will be adequate to cover them over that period of time.
Do you happen to know what is the longevity of a pumping station? Is it ten years, fifteen years? Are they looking at replacement costs after that thirty years going forward?
You know, I, I'm, I'm not an engineer, uh, but I, but I would say, I think it would be extraordinarily unlikely that we would have more than, say, one of these pumps go out. There are two pumps as part of this project. One is a backup, the other is the primary. For, for both the primary and the backup to go out at the same time would be, um, I think, very, very unlikely. And so, again, we have built into all of the computations that resulted in the lump sum payment, replacement costs for pumps, for generators. Generators are even less likely to go out than, than pumps. So it's, we think that's pretty well-covered. And, and if, you know, you may wanna inquire of Donna, she's here, but I think we're, I think we have been through that very thoroughly in the discussions with the city.
So with the other thirteen pumping stations that the city maintains, do you, do you know how old they are, how long they've been in service?
Well, I'm pretty old, but I don't know that I know about all of them. I, I know of at least a couple that are probably thirty-plus. Now, I don't know if the pumps are that old, but I know that they've been there that long.
We can ask that during the staff question portion?
Okay.
Other comments, Larry?
Oh, go ahead.
Brad Marshall with Olson Associates at six one P Street. From the longevity perspective, uh, the lift station will be built to the city's standards. That was part of the, the agreement. And, uh, the, uh, equipment and everything will be per, uh, the city equipment list, kind of that they have. There's no really defined way to build a pump station for the City of Lincoln because there's no really set standard. But, but they do maintain, um, they do maintain a list of equipment that has, has worked well for them. So we are, uh, abiding by those. For like pumps, there is probably a fifteen to twenty-year life cycle to, to each pump that they install there.
Just, just for reference purposes, I know, in addition to providing for replacement costs for some of those things, uh, the, the annual maintenance cost, operation and maintenance cost that is in the assumptions that go into this lump sum figure are considerably higher than any other, um, regu, any other agreement for the installation of a pump station that I'm aware of. I mean, it's higher than Firethorn, it's higher than Waterford was, it's higher than the one for Highway seventy-seven and Solotillo. I mean, it's, it's been, again, the subject of considerable discussion, these, the maintenance assumptions, we feel are generous.
Just one follow-up question, and maybe it is for staff, that do the water fees actually keep up with the cost of repair, maintenance and replacement for some of these sys, systems?
And I, I could, probably can't answer that because I don't know if the water fees would generate enough. If, if those were known, I could probably tell you is how, how that would compare to the annual maintenance fees that we've agreed to.
Okay, we'll hold off on that. Larry, did you have a question?
Yeah, well, in the staff report for this item, we've been told that this is an exceptional case, that this is a very unusual case in that when this land was rezoned and annexed into the city, it was for a different purpose. But now, now it's being looked at for residential development, urban density. From your perspective, as someone who, um, works on a lot of growth and development projects for the city, do you agree that this is exceptional? Do you, or could you see that this could happen again if other acreages were annexed into the city, not with an intention for dense development, but then later a need for that came forward? How, how do you, how do you respond to that?
When we talked about making this application, one of the things I knew would come up was what kind of precedent does this set and what other property owners are gonna come in and say, me too? And I went, I looked very hard for the possibility of others that were similarly situated and couldn't find any. And so far, the staff hasn't thrown up any to, to tell us that we don't, we don't wanna do this because this property might want the same thing. As far as I know, this is unique.
Other questions? Before we move on, um, so you're paying the maintenance fees upfront and those funds will sit where?
I presume somewhere in this Public Works Department in some sort of account for that purpose. I, we, I, I didn't try to get into city accounting as to where it had to be.
I just didn't know if you were setting up an Ex Row account that they could draw off of somehow for those funds? They would just be, so you're, you're setting in there? And they're being paid upfront before any permits would be issued?
That's correct, yes.
So any, any building that goes on that pump station gets put in and, and is sitting first before you guys would do any work?
The pump station, the force mains, everything has to be in place and approved prior to the issuance of building permits.
Okay.
And the money paid.
And then for these folks, are they folding into the neighborhood association that's already there? So there's no additional fees for them?
No, it, there would be no, no additional fees for them, there would be additional income for them because our intent, under, under the restrictive covenants that exist for Vintage Heights, the developer has the right to add additional properties. This property will be added to the Vintage Heights Homeowners Association and to those covenants. We may make some adjustments to make the, the, um, say, the minimum, uh, building square footage slightly larger. We think these lots are gonna be more expensive than, than the lots that are We think these lots are going to be more expensive than, than the lots that are currently in Vintage Heights. Some of them are, are a fair amount larger. But we think that it will, it, it certainly our intent to have single-family homes that are at least of the quality and, and price range of those that are in, in Vintage Heights.
So for somebody that buys one of the eighty-five lots that are going in this area, they would have no financial responsibility, other than their sewer and water fees for that pump station? Because the developer's already paid for it. It'd basically be in the price of their lot as, uh, the developers front, fronting that. And as lots sell, he'll get himself payback.
It would be accounted for at the closing on the lot.
Okay. All right, other questions? All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to this item, please come forward.
Chairman, council members, my name is Richard Rice. I'm an attorney with the Crosby Gonsal Law Firm, one thirty-four South Thirteenth Street here in Lincoln. Uh, I represent the existing Vintage Heights Homeowners Association. Um, and I have here with me, President Dan Wheeler's here with me, as is another homeowner, Ken Dewey. Um, at the planning commission level, we, uh, made clear that there were two items that needed to occur so that we wouldn't oppose this lift station. Um, and, and one being that there will be no cost to the existing homeowners, uh, or the new homeowners. And that's been covered in your dialogue. The second is that the covenants would be substantially similar to or a grade above the existing covenants. And that's where we are right now, is we do not have covenants. I have talked with Mr. Hunziker. Uh, it's kind of a timing issue. Um, but on behalf of the, the Homeowners Association, I guess I, I have to appear and say, we can't. We're not standing by what we originally agreed to if we don't say, wait a minute. Uh, we need to see the covenants, they need to be adopted. Um, so I don't know if this would be an item that would be appropriate for deferral. I think Mr. Hunziker indicated that he could probably get those covenants to me in the next week to ten days. Um, and this may become a non-issue because that's what's been represented. So I'm not taking issue with what, what's being said. But we have a body of, uh, association of members of nine hundred members. And so we have, you know, an obligation to, to be forthright with them. And, and, uh, one of the items was that these covenants would be in place. John?
Thank you, Mr. Rice.
Yes.
I, I've come to the annual meetings quite often out there. It's just grown and been a great development. Did, did I understand you correctly say there are no covenants now? Or did I misunderstand?
There will be new covenants adopted for this development.
For this section, these eighty-five homes? But Vintage Heights itself does have, okay.
Yes, I'm sorry.
And so, and that whatever the new ones are that Mr. Hunziker or whomever would draft, those are equal to or better than what you have.
Right, no, no multifamily dwelling that's been represented to us, you know, that the homes would be of, of substantially similar size. Because these people are going to be folded into our, to the existing Homeowners Association. So they want the development to be consistent with, with what's already there, so.
I just misunderstood, thinking you said there weren't any.
Wasn't clear.
And it, it does, maybe Mr. Hunziker in his rebuttal can verify the timing there so that we understand that appropriately. Were there, I had calls from a number of homeowners and there was some confusion. I had lengthy conversation with several to explain what we've done on the other pump stations and all. Any other concerns you can share with us, just so we understand?
No, I think that the, the, the issue with the pump station, I mean, the, the, the big issue was that there's no economic burden that comes back to the existing homeowners or to the new homeowners. And, and that agreement has been reached with the city, it's been signed. And you've talked to, I guess, in, in some length about, you know, the adequacy of the money, but we don't have any issues with that.
Other questions?
Well, just to confirm, you said you would appreciate a delay just to be able to take a look at the covenants. Is that right? Do I understand you correctly?
Yes, I'd like to see the covenants in final. We're told what they will say and I, I trust, but I represent a lot of other people that I have to be accountable to.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to this item, please come forward. All right, do we have staff questions?
Could we please?
Donna?
It might be helpful to have Mr. Carey stand on deck too.
Yeah.
And I don't know if.
He's always standing on deck. Do you want to go first or Jane? You might have similar questions.
Well, um, this is actually a legal question because I'm reading the, the agreement. And it says, uh, during the thirty to forty years, the facility is expected to be in use. So when you did your calculations for the, um, lump sum payment, did you use thirty-year or did you use forty-year?
I'm Donna Garden with Public Works and Utilities, and we used the thirty-year figure. Um, that's kind of what we had planned, is in our planning right now, and when that trunk sewer would be available. It's the Stevens Creek trunk sewer that comes in from the east. And, um, it's that thirty-year timeframe. So if it goes to forty, what was said before is correct, that that would, the city would bear that additional cost.
And then the question that I had asked earlier was, uh, the fees that you collect for water usage, does that come close to the repair, maintenance, and replacement costs that you would see on a pumping station from the eighty-five dwellings?
I don't know if I can answer that. Um, bear in mind that that, that fee that goes to pay for water and sewer also pays for our treatment plant and our other pumping stations, our collection system. Um, so, um, I would guess that as we go through the thirty years and we approach that timeframe, if it should happen, that we would have to adjust fees accordingly in order to cover the cost of maintaining that pump station if there was additional maintenance that needed to be included.
So I was just curious, how come you established the thirty years when you talked about thirty to forty years in the agreement? Why wouldn't it be, um, requesting the, the fees for repair?
I'm not sure where the forty-year came from. I know it's in the agreement, um, but I, I don't know where it came from. We've always talked in our discussions with Mr. Hunziker on a thirty-year basis.
Is that pretty standard and customary for the other pump stations throughout the city? That there are about thirteen that you use that language? That the, the developer will be responsible for the first thirty years and that the city take over if the pumping station is still in place?
Let me look at David for this one. But, um, I don't know if we have any that are in that situation. Um, the ones that were mentioned were like, for instance, Waterford, which was a very short timeframe. And that is in accordance with our temporary lift station policy of about six years. Um, we normally don't put in a lift station unless it's, uh, within a six-year time horizon of having a trunk sewer available to it. The larger lift stations that we have, we have fourteen lift stations. Um, five of them are large lift stations that carry our sewage underneath large creeks, rivers, whatever, particularly Salt Creek. Um, we just replaced P State, P Street Station on West O and D Street just got replaced in the last couple of years. Um, we expect a life of about twenty years on a pump station. And in this case, we added the replacement costs of the pumps and the generator into the cost that we have in the agreement so that we can replace them once.
Uh, I can speak to that a little bit too, David Carey with the Planning Department. The, the point about, um, whether or not we have agreements in place that speak to that length of time is, speaks to the uniqueness of this agreement, that we don't really have those types of agreements in, on the books to this point in time. And so we are creating a, an agreement that is, you know, really that we haven't entered into prior to this in specificity of length of time. Um, and so that is why, as Donna said, that we built into the agreement replacement costs of the pumps so that it will be that, at least that first generation turnover that's expected within a timeframe of what the Stevens Creek sewer, trunk sewer line is going to take to get down there. Um, to be as, you know, spot on as far as when we think the, that gravity flow sewer is going to get there, um, that's as, as much as you want to trust our comprehensive plan. Um, we feel good about that timeframe. We feel like that's the growth area that we're going to continue to build into it. We do have to continue to extend the trunk sewer further so that we can open up more land for development to eventually get to that point. Uh, but that is what our plan says, and that is what we intend to do. So, uh, when we entered into negotiating the, the agreement, we needed to establish a timeframe that was workable. And we felt that the thirty-year timeframe made sense based on our plan. As well as, once we established that timeframe, including certain items for costs, is where we negotiated from that, that point forward. And I would also point out that, um, we feel as far as the city is concerned that having the city, uh, responsible for the maintenance and ongoing, um, uh, use of the pump and inspections of the pump, you know, on a regular basis, is a better position for us to be in so that we can ensure that it's being maintained properly and that we catch any issues before they become a problem. So that's another part of this agreement.
All right, other questions? Roy? Oh, Carl, sorry.
Okay, I was going to get back to John's question about where's the money going to go?
And in terms of what fund it goes to, it probably goes back to the revenue funds for wastewater.
To be spent now?
For, no, it's to be spent for the maintenance of this particular.
Okay, so it'll retain in a separate account?
And I, I don't know the answer to that particularly, but I will find out for you.
Let's find out, please.
Carl? Thank you. John?
Donna, the, the capacity of, of the system with the pump station, that, do you, do you figure those? The, the capacity and verify that, that.
The downstream pipe size in terms of how much? Yes, we did, we went through that calculation, in fact, a number of times to make sure that we had adequate capacity downstream. But it's not a lot of adequate capacity. So I think there was a question asked earlier about adding on even further east. And I don't think that would be possible with this pump station.
Okay, so twenty, thirty years, however many years down the road, when we do, uh, go east and, and have those pipes in, in line, uh, will there be a, a separate treatment plant when that happens?
No, um, what actually happens is that area that now we have to pump up to get into the sewer system that we have now will actually flow to the east into the trunk sewer that will be put in to the east. And that Stevens Creek trunk sewer actually ties into our northeast plant.
Okay.
So that's where that facility will go. And I might add, this agreement also includes abandonment costs and the connection to that trunk sewer in the future.
Okay, thank you.
John, then?
Thank you. Uh, a couple of questions. On Stevens Creek, as I recall, when it was ultimately decided, the plan of attack is to start at the north and work its way south.
That's correct.
And so you're pretty spot on that it'll be at this point in thirty years? Or a few years before, I suppose, with the trunk line?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think our growth, our growth numbers really feed into those assumptions. And so we feel like that the plan is saying that we're going to be there by that thirty-year timeframe. But that's the, that's the intent, is to continue to move south and then back, in this case, back over to the west so that we can serve that area.
And then secondly, on the, uh, amounts being presented or paid by the developer, you had, um, that, uh, discounted amount, and so, so you figured thirty years maintenance, as I recall.
Right.
And then what discount rate was used? I don't know if this is a Mr. Thomas question or what, but just how did that get calculated? And I was trying to understand here whether the sixty-two fifty per year operating cost was discounted from some actual amount that increased or, or whatever? And what rates were used?
Uh, we had that discussion. You might be a little bit beyond my expertise when it gets into the accounting part of it. I think maybe, perhaps Donna was able to better explain that than I am.
We had a two point six-two percent escalator out to the future and then discounted by one point one-two percent.
One point one-two? And so, where did the sixty-two fifty come from?
The sixty-two fifty was actually, we looked at a number of the pump stations that we do operate. We took all of the costs associated with that, including replacement costs of the, the pumps over the time. And we're particularly focused in on the, the smaller ones. Obviously, the five big ones are not going to be anywhere comparable to this type or size of, of pump station. And we tried to use a reasonable amount. There were some that were lower, some that were higher, so about the average amount that was included there.
So my understanding, you're saying the operating portion on an annual basis, you're, that sixty-two fifty or you've calculated and had that escalation of two point six-two percent? And then additional, additionally to that, you also factor in after twenty years replacing the pump and some of that equipment? So those together comprise the roughly present value of two hundred thousand?
That's correct.
And then the other hundred and sixty-four thousand that the developer would pay would be for the decommissioning?
Correct, and the tie-in to the trunk sewer at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Larry?
I wanted to ask you a little bit about this similar question to what I asked Mr. Hunziker. And that is, um, you know, we have plans, but plans evolve, plans change. What, what will prevent the city from getting into this sort of situation again? And you've presented the notion that we won't annex land that can't be served by gravity sewer. But in this case, we, we did that because we didn't think the, it was necessary to serve the use of that land.
Right.
What's to say we won't annex land in the future for a use that doesn't require sewer? And then plans change?
Yeah, that's a very good question. And, um, really, we're, we're, what we would like to ensure and have this part of the discussion today is that we feel very strongly that it's good policy to not annex and not zone land that's not served or can't be served currently by urban services. Uh, that policy has served us very well. And we have our plan set up to serve land that does make sense to open up. And we can afford to do that in a cost-effective manner. And so we're, we're constantly trying to keep up with the demands of the, of development, especially on the edges where we have to extend those services. Um, so we, we really want to stress that this is an important policy that we should continue. How can we guarantee that this won't happen again? I think the main point to answer that is that we should try to apply that policy of not annexing land that can't be served with those urban services as much as possible. And on top of that, which isn't the case in this agreement back in nineteen ninety-seven, um, to have a specific annexation agreement that states that that service will not be made available. That is one more mechanism that allows more, um, sure, surety that that won't be the case in the future.
We've seen that in some recent annexations, haven't we? Where you've had language about an understanding or an agreement that there won't be.
I believe there's one other one that's down to the southwest off of Highway Seventy-Seven that had an annexation agreement that specifically stated that. And the, the point there is that it is one more, um, explicit explanation of what should be the expectation in the future, even if, you know, certain things don't change or they do change for that matter. So that is, that's what I would like to convey today. Um, and this, again, gets back to the uniqueness of this situation where in nineteen ninety-nine, we did annex and did rezone this. And so it does set apart this land area differently than what, pretty much anything else that's out there today.
So that language will serve as, um, that, that will provide some predictability and understanding and expectations going forward that should prevent this from happening? That's what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Other questions? Mathematical equations? Okay. All right, thank you very much.
It is Pi Day.
Yeah, it is Pi Day. I was talking, different kind of Pi for me. All right, Mark, do you have any rebuttal?
Just one thing, I, I think the, uh, the point about not zoning and annexing additional land that cannot be served is, is, is a good one. Um, but it's, it's, um, this one takes the next step beyond that. It not only zoned it and annexed it, but subsequent to that incorporated it into the comprehensive plan as Tier One A development property. So I mean, it's, it's, and, and in addition to that, the developer of the rest of this property was required to pay for the, a substantial portion of the paving of Ninety-Eighth Street. So I mean, it's, it's a, it is a very unique circumstance that I don't have any idea how it can arise again. But, um, you know, I, I'm pretty sure that I won't be around when it happens, if it does. I would like to address the issue of a delay. We have said from the very beginning that we are willing to, we, we have committed to the fact that this is going to be single-family, that it's going to be of a, of a caliber that is equal to or better than the existing Vintage Heights development. And that there would be covenants that incorporate this property into the Vintage Heights neighborhood under their existing covenants to give them, uh, administrative control over the assessments and so forth. But I didn't know until last Thursday afternoon that I was expected to provide those documents prior to this hearing. And I, typically, those documents don't get prepared until people are ready to close on the first lot or soon before that. Um, it's not something that needs to be done now. Uh, I'm willing to try to get it done as quickly as possible and provide it to, to Rich. However, in addition to not knowing about it until last Thursday, I'm scheduled to be leaving town mid-Wednesday afternoon and not back until, uh, a week from Monday, a week from today. So getting it back and, and having it, uh, for any sort of a, a one-week delay is going to be very, very difficult. And I would, I would, uh, request that there not be a delay because of the lack of notice of, of that being a condition of the neighborhood's, uh, support. I, I knew that they were, uh, concerned and wanted to have single-family and they wanted to have covenants. And we have said all along, yes, we are willing to do that. But I didn't know in time to be able to provide that information or a draft of it, um, prior to this hearing. And I, I'm, it's regrettable, but we really, really want to get started moving dirt just as soon as possible. And with this early spring that seems to be upon us, uh, that could be very, very soon.
Jane, then John.
So Mark, what you're saying is really publicly that whatever covenants that will be worked on in the, in the very near future will be substantially equal to the existing covenants with the other homeowners association?
They will be substantially equal or, or, or more restrictive in terms of minimum floor area for houses and the kinds of other requirements for each individual house that exist in, in Vintage Heights. I mean, we, we think this is going to be every bit as nice and maybe nicer in some ways than some of the existing homes in, in Vintage Heights. And, and that's, it's really, I hate to say this, but it is true that it's really a function of the price of the lots, and they are going to be more expensive than the previous lots were in Vintage Heights. And that's primarily because of time and holding costs, not to mention three-hundred-and-some thousand dollars of upfront costs for the lift station.
John?
Mr. Hunsaker, would there be a, a medium ground that, I don't know what the others would think, but I guess I'm just thinking out loud here. If you sent a letter and said, here's attached Vintage Heights current covenants, and we agreed to do, you know, put in the single-family clause and equal to or greater than these? Because I recall the existing covenants do allow for some multifamily townhomes or something, but if those are the key elements.
Yeah, there are some, yeah, there are some multifamily developments within the Vintage Heights community plan.
That's a concern of the homeowners.
Right, and, and the site plan that I showed you is attached to our, our application and is being approved by what you're doing with this resolution. It's, it's not identical in every respect, but it's so close that it doesn't matter. I mean, we're, we're tweaking a few dimensions here and there, but they are all single-family and in the same configuration as what you've seen.
I'm just trying to be respectful of your time concern for your clients as well as the homeowners.
And yes, I, I will definitely, I mean, I'll, I'll go out of here, if I can, if I can get it done yet today, I will send a letter over saying we'll, we'll agree to, to subject this property to the same, same standards or higher standards. And I, and I've said that several different times in several different forms.
Other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item, please.
Would it be, since I asked that question, would we appropriate to ask Mr. Rice if that would be agreeable to his clients and the homeowners? That equal to or greater, and he'd say, here's the, the existing Vintage Heights covenants, and that it'd be single-family?
Yes, Mr. Camp, I've confirmed with President Wheeler that, it's just getting the assurances, and really to, to correct the record a little bit, we made this clear at the planning commission, it's been out there for a while in terms of the covenants, but that's water under the bridge, so.
I just want to facilitate both sides here, it sounds like there's efforts here to make the work.
There's an agreement, we've worked very well together, and Mark has been very, very good about keeping the homeowners.
They're going to give us the money too, so I mean, we got that, we can go party.
Not exactly.
Anything else?
No, I take that, that was a joke.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, we'll move on to the next item.
All right, next is item nineteen, amending Title Two of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to officers, departments, and personnel by adding a new section numbered two-point-oh-four-point-oh-six-oh, requiring the reporting of contracts to the city council, and adding a new section two-point-one-eight-point-oh-eight-oh, requiring the prequalification of firms providing services to the city.
Jane? I believe this is yours.
Um, well, I think it's John's, to be honest with you.
Well, I'd like to make a motion on this to have substitute number two that would replace what had been before us in its entirety. And I'll discuss those parameters if there's a second.
And I'd like to second that.
Let's do that in the voting session.
I'd just like for public hearing though, for people to know what it is.
Okay.
If I may, basically, it's the same parameters, this is the reporting requirement for professional service contracts, and the modifications here were discussed by Ms. Gator Baird, Ms. Rabel, myself, and several others in the council, the city attorney. And the city attorney drafted this, and it basically added that rather than do an estimate of the cost of a particular contract, that it would identify whether it fell into a range of zero to a hundred thousand, hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand or over that. And that follows in the current process that has those three ranges delineated, and there's a different process to use in each of those. And I believe other than that, everything is the same. Is that a fair statement? Okay, so just so anyone wants to testify, that's what we have before us.
All right, anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the next.
All right, next is our public hearing ordinance, the second reading, I'll call items twenty and twenty-one together. They are street and alley vacation one-five-zero-zero-six, vacating South Fiftieth Street between A Street and Everett Street, and Everett Street and Washington Street between South Fiftieth and South Fifty-second, and special permit twelve-nineteen M, application of Bryan Medical Center to construct a ninety-three-thousand-two-hundred-eighty-six square-foot medical office building, parking and green space, and a waiver to increase the building height of the district for expansion of Bryan Medical Center East Campus on property generally located at South Fiftieth and A Street.
Good afternoon, members of the council, Danae Calkowski appearing today on behalf of Bryan Medical Center. Also with me today are David Reese and Don Sheets with Bryan Medical Center, Wade Stang with Davis Design, and Mark Palmer with Olson Associates. We're going to do a little bit of a team approach, I'm going to start today with just giving a little bit of background about the applications that are before you. Mr. Reese is going to talk a little bit about the site history and the neighborhood outreach that's gone along with this project. And then Wade Stang and Mark Palmer will talk a little bit more about the specifics of the site. So Bryan has two applications that are before you today that are going to allow the expansion of their campus to the northeast. So the area that I have highlighted in blue there is the area that we're requesting be added to their existing healthcare facility special permit. This adds approximately eight-point-three acres and a ninety-four, just a little bit under ninety-four thousand square-foot medical office building. The area, as you can kind of see, goes from the existing fifty, Fiftieth Street over to Fifty-second, Everett Street north up to A Street. This area previously contained single-family residences that were all purchased by Bryan Medical Center. Bryan is also requesting vacation of the local streets that are in the area. With this area being added to the special permit, we no longer need the local streets to provide access to the single-family residences, so we are asking for the vacation of three of the local streets that are impacted within this area. We have South Fiftieth Street to the south, Washington Street between Fiftieth and Fifty-second, and Everett between those same streets. There's going to be a part of Everett Street is really going to remain, but as an internal drive for the site, and there will be a portion of Fiftieth Street that also remains as a, as a service drive to the back of the building. As part of this also, the southern leg of that Cotner-A Street, Fiftieth Street intersection will be closed as part of this project because we'll be basically taking out the pavement entirely in that area. The Bryan team started working on this project several months ago with city staff, even before, you know, application was made to the city. Continued to work with the city on the issues that, as they arose, we delayed the applications being scheduled on planning commission so we could work through some of the issues, particularly some discussions about potential dedication of future right-of-way from the site. The only issue that we were unable to agree with on, with staff was the vehicular and pedestrian access across Fiftieth Street. We were able at planning commission to have our team present some of the constraints that we saw from a functional and a physical standpoint to making those connections. Planning commission was able to consider that and voted unanimously to support both applications with our requested amendment. Now I'm going to go ahead and let David talk, I'd like to maybe have us all present, and then if you have questions at the end, the whole team would be available for questions.
Makes sense.
Good afternoon, my name's David Reese, sixteen-hundred South Forty-eighth Street. I'm a vice president in clinical and support services, and I've been at Bryan for nineteen years. And just a little bit of the history, we started working on purchasing these houses in this area probably about eighteen years ago, somewhere in that timeframe, when we were working with the planning department, at the time Ray Hill was here as a, one of the plant, uh, staff, working on long-term growth, this is the area that we're talked about to grow for Bryan, where we needed to really focus on and the like. So over that time period, over these eighteen years, we were purchasing houses and then leasing them and the like, to the point now where we're at where we've got enough growth and substantial growth within the medical center itself, it was time that we really needed to start looking at doing something. In that timeframe, in probably past year, we started working with planning staff and talking about this whole aspect of how we're going to grow and the medical office building and the site itself for about a year timeframe. In addition to that, we ended up having two neighbor meetings as well, we had a neighbor meeting in August, and then we also had a second neighbor meeting in November. Both of them well-attended, the first one, we had about twenty neighbors come, which was really good. Talked a little bit about what we're looking at, the map of where we're growing, the aspects of it, and then had a subsequent meeting to follow up with some enhancements of that site, which you see today, and talked at length with them. Then in addition to that, we reached out, some of our staff reached out to the principal at homeschool. Principal Peterson, Haven Peterson, talked about the impact on the neighborhood and what we're doing there, and talking with him about on the project themselves and the school, and then also we reached out to the fire department. I personally went over there and talked to them about aspects of the project and any of the folks that I could catch on the north side there on some of the homes there on A Street as well. So a lot of neighbor outreach that we really tried to get out to, to talk about the impact on that, and then what we're doing from the landscaping side and the like, and working with our, our neighbors as well. It's a, we're really excited about the project, it's really going to help us for growth for the medical center as we continue to see the city grow. We're growing as an impact upon that as well, and just growth within our own internal volumes that we're seeing at Bryan Medical Center. So we're really excited about this project and where we're going to go forward from here. So with that, I'll turn it over to Wade Stang to talk a little bit about the project itself and the impact.
Good afternoon, Wade Stang with Davis Design, twelve-twenty-one N Street. We have a site plan here shown of that specific area. The vehicular access to the site primary will be off of A Street, there will be a new curb cut coming on, off of A Street. That'll be where visitors to the complex come in. And then we have secondary access off of South Fifty-second Street, and then another access that'll be internal to the site, internal of the campus, that will be on the south side off of what is now Everett Street. As Danae mentioned in her earlier comments, the vacated Everett Street and a portion of what is now Fiftieth Street will serve as our primary service access. So vehicles coming in for deliveries and trash, and to remove snow from the existing parking structure here. Will come in off that road, and we'll have a, a termination at this point here. So during the winter, when it does snow, we have snow removal off to the east side, and vehicles need to be able to come over and, and remove snow out of that area. The site topography is fairly dramatic from the southeast corner to the northwest corner, there's about a forty-foot drop. If you go out there today, you'll, you'll see it dramatically drops from east to west and then from south to north. In order to deal with that, we're going to try and level out a little bit, we're showing a retaining wall along the southeast corner of the site, and we'll be pushing earth both to the, to the west and to the north. We're also making use of the existing grade with the way we're laying out the building, there will be two entrances to the building. Visitors coming in off of A Street will park in the north lot if they're coming for outpatient services, and that'll be on the first level, this area here being the drop-off and entrance area with accessible parking located close to the entrance. And then one level up from that, on the east side, will be the medical office building entrance, the clinical entrance, and that's located right here. There's one level of outpatient services, and then there's three levels of medical office space above that. Shown in the purple here is a skywalk that will be created to tie back to the campus. And this primarily will be for medical staff to be able to go over there, but visitors will be able to do that as well. It ties in with the existing stair and elevator tower, excuse me, that's just south of the existing Cotner parking structure. So there will be a connection from the east side of that stair and elevator connect, uh, tower, and come over and tie into second level of the office building. The aqua color shows all the new and existing sidewalks. We have existing sidewalks along Cotner and along the west side of, of Fiftieth Street, and then we'll have sidewalks internally that will connect to existing sidewalks both on A Street and Fifty-second Street. If I missed anything, Mark?
Uh, yeah, one, Mark Palmer, Olson Associates, six-oh-one P Street. One, one item we've been investigating, or been asked to investigate an access or pedestrian access that somewhat lined up in this area. The grade, there's about six feet, as Wade mentioned, this is a walkout almost style of building to step down to utilize the grade, and we're still, we're about six to seven feet elevation difference from our parking lot down to the existing grade. There's still water mains, there's still a sanitary sewer, there's still infrastructure that needs to stay at that elevation, and so that, just from a, a practicality point of view, we couldn't get that grade to work to get that sidewalk there, and one of the, this driveway was something that we added as a request from the planning to get more access and to try and get people, other options for getting in and out of the site.
All right. Do we, is this the end or?
That's the end, so any questions?
Okay, questions, we'll start, we'll start with Jane, then go to John.
So Mark or Wade, could you tell me a little bit more of how to move traffic out onto Cotner Boulevard from Fifty-second Street, will they be able to make a left-hand turn and, and head west on A Street? Or is there going to be a traffic signal, or?
Uh, there's still the traffic signal at the old Fiftieth and A, it's still, it's a five-way intersection at this point. This does allow for lift turns, as well as what we're looking at is providing storage to where we have a lift out bay, and basically we have a lift out and a ride-out and an entry. And then Fifty-second Street would be, it's unsignalized today, it's going to be a full movement access, but, but with no traffic signal. There is a pedestrian crossing a little further to the east, which allows the kids to get to school north-south, so there'll be that, that further to the east that won't be impacted.
Okay, thank you.
John?
Yes, Bryan has evolved, since I was born there, it doesn't exist anymore, but, and I know Wade and his firm have just, it's been a perpetual project for you.
TMI, man.
We have feelings, Brian.
Okay, yeah, there was Billy and then me, Dirk, Bill and me, okay, anyway. Is this, I've heard comments this will complete the campus forever, or do you have some contingency plans where you could deck the parking, or, Mr. Reese?
I don't know, let Dave address that.
Okay, it's just a great facility, and I'm just curious what plans you have, just in case you have access.
Thanks, Mr. Camp. So we are actually, right now, in the middle of doing, actually hired a firm to come in, and they're helping us do a master facility plan. So they're looking at not just east, but they're looking at east, our Bryan West campus, and our services throughout the rest of the city as well. So they're getting, they're looking at all the data, all of our volumes, and they're projecting what's the future growth for us in the next ten years? Is it within the campuses themselves, or is it somewhere else within the city itself? And just really sitting down and taking a look at that, and so we're in the process of really developing that plan as we speak now for the next ten years and what that's going to look like, and then how that, this site plays into it as well for long-term and throughout the rest of the city as well. And then how that, this site plays into it as well for long-term and throughout the rest of the city as well.
Carl?
Well, I can't miss that opportunity and in behalf of my district and Ms. Lamb's district. I would point out that there are no hospitals north of O and anytime there could be a hospital considered in the north part of our city. Not just joking, that there's, you know, a serious concern that people have that live in North Lincoln that they need closer proximity to medical care. So, thank you.
Right, and that's something, like I said, we're going to be seriously looking at, what are the services within the city of Lincoln? What do we need to do differently for the next ten years and as Lincoln grows, as we continue to see Lincoln grow? What's that going to look like for us as well?
Thanks. Other questions? Could you put the site map back up, please?
The overall one or?
Yeah, well, your new.
Yeah, hit sign.
Okay, can we hit the button real quick? The turn lane onto A Street from the northeast lot, how far up the hill is that?
Right here?
Or over onto A Street?
Looking at this location, we sit at about a hundred and, hundred and fifty feet. It's not significant, but it's a, a right turn lane is typically not a, a full stopping movement. You're, or it's a momentarily stop, you're stopping and you're moving and that's a.
Is there any concern that people that are turning left out of that parking lot might get jumbled up with the amount of traffic that comes out of A and has to back up to cross Cotner? Or is some of that alleviated by having the Fiftieth Street cut out?
When we looked at it, we didn't look in complete detail of the depth of this. Our traffic engineers thought this was inadequate length to allow for those, for those vehicles to turn right. What happens here is the vehicles move and David could attest to this and Dawn is, is that when the traffic signals are on red, there's, it creates an opening for traffic to move. And so what would typically happen is when this has got the red light, you'll actually see vehicles moving. And so from all our analysis, that with the multiple locations, you've got this location to be exiting out to that point. You've got the ability to go south. You've got multiple ways of moving around.
So does Fifty-second, Fifty-second Street, does that line up with the area coming out of the neighborhood to the north?
There is no Fifty-second North of A. Well, yeah, it, there, yeah, there is.
Okay.
Diagonal.
Okay, so the peak of the hill is somewhat, somewhat to the east of Fall Creek Road. And I'm only asking because I know how steep that hill is on both sides. If you're turning out of that parking lot, if you would be able to see a car that's coming over the top. But it looks like you should be able to because your exit from the parking lot is somewhat where the A Street marker is on this, which would be. Okay, I'm, I'm good. So, all right, thank you. Other questions? All right.
I'd say that it seems like you ought to be congratulated for pulling off an incredibly difficult feat. This is, I mean, I don't know if you can tell, looking at this, this is eight acres in the middle of the city that you've managed to acquire and over almost two decades to provide an expansion for an important institution, our community. I think it's pretty impressive work.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item, please come forward. All right, we'll move on to the next items.
All right, next are items twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. They are approving the Telegraph District Phase One redevelopment agreement between the city Edo LLC and four oh one Building LLC relating to the redevelopment of properties generally located at four oh one South Twenty-first Street and three thirty-three South Twenty-first Street for renovation of two existing structures and related improvements to be used for office, retail, and parking. Amending the fiscal year fifteen sixteen CIP to authorize and appropriate one point six million in TIF funds for the Telegraph District Phase One project and authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds for the Telegraph District Phase One redevelopment project.
Members of the City Council, David Landis, Urban Development Department Director, and the applicant in this case. There are three elements to this project. Something that you would have seen before in early January when you saw the plan amendment that predicted this project of this nature. One of the elements is the revamping of this building. Building has been unoccupied for about three years by Windstream and has now been secured by the owners of the Telegraph District. It is a substantial facade, but one of the difficulties of it is that it is in fact a block-long monolithic structure with no windows, no transparency. The kind of thing that makes the pedestrian feel comfortable and watched as they proceed. So this is a structure that would not meet downtown design standards, although they apply to this, this area. Certainly grandfathered up until now, but this replacement structure, when I say replacement, I mean this rehabbed structure has been before the Urban Design Committee and the Historic Preservation Committee, both of which responded unanimously and gave an waiver to the downtown standards. Because the new facade of this structure will be much more open, much more transparent, but it doesn't contain the total amount of transparency contained by design standards in the downtown area. One of the reasons for the waiver is that the internal structure of the building is such that you have supports that wouldn't permit large picture windows on the side of the structure. This is as good as can be done and is a substantial improvement. And for that reason, the Urban Design Committee was in support. There is a second element. This is what it looks like today. It's a garage. It also has that same feeding that, that makes pedestrian traffic uncomfortable and that is large, long blank walls in which one is essentially alone and unobserved. That is to be replaced by a structure that has retail on the first floor. Again, transparency, doors, things to do. Hopefully a restaurant or two and then parking above. The third element of this is in fact the existing surface parking lot, which is to the west of the building that I showed you at the first. It also violates downtown parking standards in that it is not buffered at its edges and will be in the event this redevelopment agreement is approved. The large brick office building is seventy thousand square feet. It's to be the home of seven hundred Nell Net employees. A number of those are to be new employees. Some of them may be from previously office locations from around the city, but the developer's in a position to answer whatever their, their office needs are. There will be a hundred and ninety surface parking stalls that will be buffered on that block. And then the other building, which is now a garage, will include five thousand square feet of retail space on the first floor and a hundred and seventy parking stalls above. There is a pedestrian improvement to the extent of a pedestrian node on the west side of Twenty-first and L intersection. And there is also included in this streetscape that is to be maintained by the developer. The total cost of the project's twenty-two million dollars. The private investment is over twenty million and the TIF is one point six million dollars. One point four of it is on the large brick building, about two hundred thousand of it is on the garage side. The money would be used for energy enhancements for the brick building and facade enhancements for the garage building. The schedule for construction, what's pretty much ASAP as far as the work of this city council is concerned. In the, in the event you approve the project, the attempt to build this project in this form would begin as soon as possible, but with an, as an outside timeline of about a year of construction. Questions have been raised about the Telephone Museum, which is on this location. A committee's been formed, met last Friday. They've been given a year of free rent at the location by the developer. There is a desire to form a sustainable future for the museum, to have it be opened more often than what it is. And that work hopefully will be completed in two or three months. The developer's here to answer questions as well. Are there questions you'd like to address to me? Larry?
Thank you, Dave. We've had a chance to look at this project a number of times and there's many, many benefits to the community, which we've all discussed and supported in the past. One thing I couldn't help noticing though is that the value of the project has gone up. In January it was at fifteen million with TIF at around eight hundred and twenty-five thousand. Now twenty-two with one point six, the TIF number doubled. Can you help us understand why the changes?
The developer analyzed this for themselves and they understand that under normal conditions, if you have a new building, there's a proportion of perhaps fifteen to eighteen percent of the hard costs of that construction, which could be predicted as a TIF recoverable amount. That is not the case when you rehab the inside of a building generally. However, in this case, the, the expansion of the use, the income stream that should be there from the retail and the projected impact of the exterior changes to the building and the upgrading of it, they believe will predict, they predict will have a greater response from the assessor's office than normally rehab units have had in the past. They're willing to bear the burden of that. These are developer purchased bonds. Should there be shortfall in any measure, it would fall to the developer.
Well, maybe let them speak to it more, but it sounds like you're saying that it's not that there've been substantial changes in the plans or the site plan, but that it's a recalculation of the assessed value going forward.
That's right. It's the best guess of what an assessor will do. However, that is a black box. And the city and developers have been surprised in the past. So one of our tools that we've been doing since that time is to make sure that if there is a miss of the target, that the miss falls on the developer's side of the equation and not of our own.
John?
Yes, I was just wondering, Mr. Landis, if you would itemize and by priority, what the TIF would be.
If you take a look at the exhibit, basically you'll find that the largest piece for the four oh one building is for energy enhancements in a, an improved heating and air conditioning unit. And on the three oh one building or the three thirty-three building, it is in the nature of the facade. And those are the two recited uses for the TIF funds in the building. Now, the amount of money in the project that would be TIF eligible is rather significant. Site acquisition would be a possibility, et cetera, et cetera. However, to simplify this, the developer and the city agreed that those would be the two uses that would be recited in the redevelopment agreement.
Thank you. Other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Kent Seacrest, representing Edo LLC, which is the proud owner today of what we call the four oh one building, the windowless building, or excuse me, the parking garage. And then we have another partnership here that is the four oh one building LLC, which is the windowless building that David showed you moments ago. These two entities are made up of B&amp;J Partnership Limited, along with Nell Net Real Estate Ventures, who are working together to not only do this first phase, but equally important will be the subsequent phases to the Telegraph District. Terry Heims, Ben Kaiser with Nell Net Clay Smith, Adam Criswell with Speedway are here today to answer any of your additional questions. David did a nice job summarizing all the major images, the additional pictures, if you want to see them, we've got plenty. There's a hundred and fifteen pages to this redevelopment agreement to describe all the activities of how to rehab a forty-four-year-old windowless building and how to rehab a parking garage that is fifty years old. David went through this. There are actually a four point seven million dollars of public eligible items here. The TIF can only generate and fund a million, a million six of them. So that's making the private sector pick up three point one million of public improvements. That's an owie. Most developers don't have to do that type of equation to get these areas started, but the area needs some tender loving care. This has been a very interesting area. This area is the first phase. We're going to do other phases all the way potentially up to N and O Street from the waterway of Animal Valley over to Nineteenth Street. It is a very old forgotten industrial area, lots of different mixed uses. What we're doing is converting, this is the first phase that will be office and retail. But the lead phase or activity in the next phases will lead with condominiums, apartments, townhomes, lofts, work-live units to supplement office and retail neighborhood support services. We've got elementary schools in the area, which is great for families. We've got Lincoln High School right across the street, which will be positive attribute. Three bike trails that go into the Telegraph District. What we've seen is West Haymarket's been a game changer for downtown and the community. We think that this could also be a similar game changer for the southeast part of downtown. This sleepy area will be transformed in the next ten years. I think another game changer that's been announced is Southeast Community College going right across the street to the east. That's another game changer that will be big along the way. David announced, summarized for you, the Telephone Museum Planning Committee. And if any of you are interested in seeing that press release, I do have copies here for you if you would like to see that. Basically, it's been a very important matter. This important attribute of this community's been there from, since nineteen ninety-five. It's the legacy of LT&amp;T, Windstream, and Altel along the way. And they've been helped and funded by LT&amp;T, Altel, and Windstream up until now. That has ceased as of Friday. The project and real estate has transferred. And Windstream no longer is the owner of the property. And they sent notice back in September to terminate the museum's lease. We, as the new property owners, have, do not want to kick that important asset out in any way, so we've committed to a year of free rent to give them time. And this, what we are doing is announcing seventeen-member committee that's made up of very good people. The museum leadership itself, we have Lincoln City Representatives, developer representatives, Windstream. All the major community foundation representatives are there. The Woods family, retired LT&amp;T people, museum experts and SEC representatives all are coming together to see, how do we take a museum that's open on Sunday for three hours? And how do we increase the days and the hours? So you don't want to keep a museum in an active area if they're dark most of the time. We want to see if we can open the doors more for the citizens to enjoy and to increase the educational opportunities. So that's what we plan to do in the next two to three months as a committee is to go forward and solve the riddle of how to make that go forward. I have a motion to amend. I could hand it out to you now. Tim C. from the City Attorney's Office has indicated his agreement with it, but I don't think he liked the form of my, how I laid it out. So I think he wants to, by next, your next city council packet, take the language I've done and put it in what I call City Attorney Form for you for next week. This is a resolution on the redevelopment agreement, but there's a capital improvement budget amendment in front of you and a bond ordinance for the TIF. So we normally wouldn't vote on this until next Monday anyway, so that motion to amend will catch up. It has to do with the real funds subject of penal bonds, performance bonds, and how you be sure we do the work we are doing. The, I just finally want to thank and appreciate all the work to date that Lynn Jarmstedt has done, Tim C. from City Attorney, Ed Zimmer from Planning, Paul Barnes from Planning, and Bob Semmering. It's taken a lot of effort because this is the first phase, but it sets the tone for the rest of the district. And so a lot of extra work went into this and we appreciate all their hard work. And with that, our team would be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Jane?
So you mentioned that the Telephone Pioneer Museum will have one year rent-free, up to one year. When does that start or when do they have to actually be moseying on? When does that start, or when do they have to actually be moseying on?
Well, we need to do a lease with them that's rent-free.
Okay.
Their lease expires at the end of this month.
Okay.
So, arguably March two thousand seventeen, at the end of March seventeen.
Great.
We're hoping though to be able to accelerate that because they don't like living in the Twilight Zone, nor do we like them to be in that position, so getting them answers is real important.
Great, thank you.
Other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward.
Good afternoon. My name is Richard Schmeling. I'm at forty-six twelve Van Doren Street here in Lincoln. I hadn't planned on speaking on this issue, but I got a little tired sitting there, and this is a good way for me to get up and stretch for a minute. Seriously, I always feel at a huge disadvantage after following Dave Landis because his theatrical skills are far and above mine, and he's a hard act to follow. I want to give you an anti-view of this project if I can. I have a very good friend who works at NelNet. She's currently working in the Miller and Payne Building. NelNet has enjoyed fantastic success in our community. They're a distinct asset to Lincoln, and they're growing, and they are running out of space. My friend tells me that her cubicle, the adjoining cubicles are so small that when she needs to back out away from her workstation, she has to make sure the person opposite her isn't backing out at the same time. I think my point is that NelNet needs additional space, and this will give it to them, and I, I hope you can see your way to doing this. If, if for some reason this one doesn't fly, I'll bet NelNet will be back asking you for some, some changes in, in the building elsewhere because they just, they're overcrowded. My other thought is that I, I think Lincoln is so fortunate to have Speedway Properties, and I've looked at what they've come up with, and it's just a fantastically wonderful idea for that area. I've lived in Lincoln since nineteen fifty-eight. I, I've traveled through that area, and I think it's going to be just wonderful for Lincoln. So, I'd just like to add my small voice and urge you to go ahead and approve this development. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? All right, thank you.
Well, good afternoon, Chairman Fellers, members of the council. My name is Kyle Fisher. I'm here representing the Lincoln Chamber of Commerce today. We are in the Three Landmark Center at eleven twenty-eight Lincoln Mall, Suite one hundred. You know, if you've been outside today, you can see it's a Chamber of Commerce kind of day out there. And you know, in here, I think it's easy to say that in here, it's Chamber of Commerce kind of day in here today as well. Your last agenda items have involved two of Lincoln's largest employers, three when you include Speedway Properties, and two are most outstanding companies. And, you know, these agenda items have been on expansion projects, which I think as a representative of your local Chamber of Commerce, we can easily get behind and easily support. Yeah, I think it's obvious this Telegraph District project gets unanimous support of the Chamber for moving forward. Let me speak specifically about it when I say, it's a type of project that I think hits every high point. It checkmarks every box that this council looks for, that our chamber looks for, that our community looks for when we look at an economic development project in the community. You go into an area that's underserved, maybe underused, you redevelop it, you remove blight, you grow jobs. There's not much more I or anyone else can say other than thank you to these companies for the investment they're willing to make in Lincoln, and thank you on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce to them for wanting to be in our community and for doing that. You know, they, they truly have been pioneers in each of their industries, and I think it's very fitting that we not lose sight of the fact that they're moving into an area in Antelope Valley that was set up just for that purpose, for people who want to come in and be pioneers into that area, leave their mark and redevelop it. We saw it first with Assurity, we're now seeing it with this Telegraph District project. It's a great community investment, and we ask for your support as a Chamber of Commerce for this project as well.
All right, questions for Kyle? Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Lori Gibbons. I just have two questions or two thoughts while I was sitting here listening, and one is, I really appreciate that they've responded to the concerns of the citizens about the museum. I think that when we do a lot of this redevelopment, a lot of times the history is not being taken into consideration, and that's just the right place for that to be, and so I hope that they do go ahead and continue to find a way for it to stay in that area and be viable after even a year. I also would like to say that I don't, I haven't followed this a whole lot, but I'm wondering what's going to happen with the downtown now if we're moving NelNet and SEC, and if anybody's been thinking of that, and what kind of ideas might be coming forth for that. So, that was all I had to say.
Thank you.
Laura, what's your address?
Two five two five S is my mailing address.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else wishing to speak? All right, did you want to have any rebuttal to that? Okay. All right, thank you very much. Did you have any rebuttal? We're good? All right. All right, we'll move on to the next item.
All right, next is item twenty-five, approving the lease agreement between the city, Nebraska Golf and Turf, and Bruning State Bank for the lease of one hundred twenty golf carts and five utility vehicles for use by the Lincoln Parks and Rec Golf Division.
Lynn Johnson with Lincoln City Golf. Some of the county may remember a very similar item before the city council a year ago. Previously, we had been leasing the golf carts on a five-year period. Last year, we made the determination that we wanted to do it on a six-year period, so we leased half of the golf carts for a six-year period. We extended the lease agreement for the remaining half of the golf carts for one year, and so the action that is before you this afternoon is the lease agreement for the remaining half of the golf carts. So, these will be a hundred and twenty new brand, a hundred and twenty new golf carts that will be placed at Holmes Golf Course and at Mahoney Golf Course. And there are two different parts to this agreement. One is the agreement with Club Car for providing the carts and then agreeing to buy the carts for the, pardon me, the residual value at the end of the agreement. The other is with Bruning State Bank for providing the financing during the six-year lease period. And the annual lease amount for the hundred and twenty golf carts is sixty-eight thousand five hundred and sixty dollars, and we have accounted for this within our planning for funding within the golf program, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions about golf carts. Carl?
Thank you. The revenue for golf cart rental, that, that goes to pay this off, is that?
It does, yeah. It's a fair, and I, Carl, I should have that number, but it's a fairly significant amount that we generate off of golf cart rental every year. It's actually one of the profit centers for the golf program.
Yeah, thank you.
The other thing that I probably should mention, because it has been a question, a year ago, we made the decision from a maintenance standpoint not to include the club washers on the golf carts, and I can tell you that we heard from an awful lot of people that that was a bad idea, and so we actually are installing the club washers on the hundred and twenty carts that we leased last year, and just so you know, these hundred and twenty carts will have club washers on them. So, it's an important service that we provide to the golfing public, so.
It's important when it's a wet year.
Exactly.
Cindy?
Yes, thank you. Okay, so you mentioned in this new lease that they will be agreeing to purchase at the residual price at the end of the lease period. Are these going to be replacing then a hundred and twenty other carts that are currently in service?
Yes, they are.
And do we have the same arrangement for those carts with the, the company we leased from?
We do. This, this, the financing was bid on this. We looked at a couple of different golf cart vendors, and ironically, it ended up that we have the same vendor and we have the same bank providing financing. So, this is almost identically the same situation that we have on the hundred and twenty carts that we leased last year.
So, they'll be, I guess my question isn't about the hundred and twenty we leased last year, it's about, this is this other half, second half. Okay, and so the, those carts that will be going out of service, are we being paid the residual value of those, is my question?
We are actually. The bank holds the, trying to think how to, how to say this, the bank actually holds that value, so we don't get any return on when, when the residual value is paid back. Those funds don't come back to the golf program, they actually go to the bank. But, but yes, Club Car will be purchasing the hundred and twenty golf carts that these are replacing.
Okay, so it's like we get a trade-in value for them?
Exactly. That's exactly right.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to this item, please come forward. All right, next item, please.
All right, that concludes our public hearing. We can go into the voting session.
All right.
Item sixteen, accepting the report of new impending claims against the city and approving disposition of claims set forth for the period of February sixteenth through the twenty-ninth, two thousand sixteen, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Carl. Discussion. All right, call the roll, please.
I just like, I'm, I'm really perplexed by Mr. Hoppy's claim, and I can see both sides of it. It's, we want to be careful as much as we can for citizens' property. It's just one of those very unfortunate things, and I think in this case, I'm going to support the denial, and looking at it as our city attorney said, on the basis of protecting the health and safety of our citizens, that it seemed like unfortunately a logical thing to inquire if there'd been a party that might have been affected in that one unit. A very difficult decision, though.
Carl?
And I, I agree with John. I think, you know, we've had other cases, similar kinds of claims when law enforcement have, in the course of their duty of, of trying to find suspects in crime, have, have had to do this. In this case, the, you know, they indicated that, that evidence was actually in front of the door, which would, like a reasonable person would suspect that maybe there was somebody inside who, for whatever reason, didn't want to answer the doorbell, and so I, I think it's probably one that's appropriately denied.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, call the roll, please.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then is special permit seventeen sixty-two E for the Vintage Heights Community Unit Plan, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Seconded by Carl. Discussion. All right, call the roll, please.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item eighteen is approving the Vintage Heights CUP Pump Station Enforce Main Agreement, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Seconded by Carl. Discussion.
Probably should have mentioned this on seventeen, not eighteen, but since it's related items. Appreciate Mr. Hunzickers' agreement at John's request to put in writing the, a statement that he's planning to uphold the covenants. Pardon? He's, okay, apparently he's already done it. Well, great. Thank you for, for your willingness to act today to provide that extra reassurance for the Homeowners Association about the single-family nature of the residences that will be brought into this development and the covenants having the similar standards.
All right. Any other discussion? Okay, call the roll, please.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item nineteen is amending Title II of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to officers, departments, and personnel by adding a new section numbered two point zero four point zero six zero, requiring the reporting of contracts to the city council, and adding a new section two point one eight point zero eight zero, requiring the prequalification of firms providing services to the city, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Carl. Discussion.
Now, this isn't the substitute two, though.
The substitute was introduced by Camp, seconded by Raybold.
Okay, so the substitute is on the table right now since we've moved the item, or do we need to do a separate motion since that I, that was made earlier? Are we on the substitute number two?
I think it, make sure the record's clear.
Moving again.
Okay. Okay, I'd move, substitute two.
I second that.
Seconded by Jane.
This is to replace in its entirety for the previous format.
Okay, discussion on substitute two? John or Jane, either one?
Oh, well, I guess, yes, well, I'd like to thank my colleagues for helping work this along the, the way and the fine tuning we did. I think it pulls everything together, and it appears that it facilitates having the reporting of these professional service contracts so that we have it there in the public and have that transparency. So, I'm thankful, I know, Larry and Jane and the city attorney, thank you.
Well, I just want to commend John because it was a long haul to get a reporting mechanism that will allow us for more accountability, communication, and transparency. I know we have a process in place, and I think this is a step in the right direction so that we can really review, review all the items that are in the works, and also the ones that have been negotiated and approved on a more regular basis. And I think in that effort of transparency, that we'll be more likely to see things that we would flag or ask additional questions of the mayor and the directors to make sure that we are moving forward in the right direction. So, I do want to thank John for his persistence and patience as we finally got to a mechanism that I think will, will allow us greater, greater oversight and review, and of course more public transparency.
Cindy?
Thank you. I do appreciate my colleagues working together on this. I don't, I know that this doesn't achieve all that I'd like to see achieved in this area, as was, you know, noted by our, our previous discussions on some, on similar legislation, but I am glad that it is now prospective, that we'll have at least some oversight before things happen. I don't know that there's any teeth in it, that it does anything other than give us that oversight, but I do think it's a step in the right direction, so I'm going to support it today. Thank you.
Other discussion?
Well, I just want to thank my colleagues for working together, even though it took some time, but I think what is in this substitute number two represents a good start and something that we can build off of in the future in, in looking at contracts and how the city procures for services and spends its money. All right, call the roll, please.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, and then on the main motion, please?
That was a substitute.
Right.
Yep. Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Public hearing, or ordinance's second reading are items twenty through twenty-five. Ornance's third reading, item twenty-six, text amendment one six zero zero one, amending chapter twenty-seven point fifty-nine of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to airport zoning regulations to extend the approach zone from three miles to a new limit of ten miles, establish the area included within the airport hazard area, revise existing definitions and add new definitions and other changes to be in accordance with the passage of LB one forty, and repealing sections twenty-seven fifty-nine oh one oh through twenty-seven fifty-nine oh four oh, twenty-seven fifty-nine oh six oh through twenty-seven fifty-nine point oh nine oh, twenty-seven fifty-nine one ten, twenty-seven fifty-nine one twenty, one forty, and one fifty of the Lincoln Municipal Code as hitherto existing, introduced by Raybold.
So moved. Second.
Seconded by Larry. Discussion. All right, call the roll, please.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item twenty-seven, resolution for action only, appeal by Carl Eskridge of the Star Trent Advisory Board Action, approving the transit development plan and the near-term route changes that are part of the TDP, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Roy. Discussion. Seconded by Roy, discussion. Let's, I have a staff question for Mr. Davis.
I do too.
But we'll, we'll have you come up and chat a little bit. Cindy, I'll let you go first.
Thank you. Thank you for being here today. We've come down a long road, haven't we?
Yes.
I understand that you've made some changes in response to, uh, the comments of the citizens, and I just wonder if you'd explain some of those for us, summarize them.
Yes, and we'll go ahead and ask them. And I'm going to go ahead and have, uh, Thomas, uh, just walk through those changes that, that were just passed out.
Hey, there were eight different changes, you know, since the last, you know, uh, version that you've seen of the preferred alternative, which are the short-term changes, the fiscally constrained changes, uh, for the plan. Two of them have to do with extending two routes, the University Place Route to, and the Bethany Route up to Eighty-Fourth Street. Via, for the University Place Route, it's via Adams to extend this route to the Walmart on Eighty-Fourth, as well as provide access to Lancaster Event Center. It's not quite where we want to be with Lancaster Event Center, but it gets, you know, close, you know, much closer than, you know, beforehand.
So by access, you don't mean the bus is actually going to go there?
We, we don't have a place to turn around right now there.
But we did hear testimony last time that the event center was going to work towards getting employees and citizens there for events.
Yeah, yes. The other extension to Eighty-Fourth Street was of the route forty-two, the Bethany Route to SCC via Holdridge. This would address some of the previous comments that we heard from the community about losing access along Holdridge, as well as serving the High V on Holdridge and Eighty-Fourth. Would also provide another connection for citizens to access the community college. We had several different, you know, changes that related to, uh, the, the directionality of loops. You know, we're operating clockwise versus counterclockwise, but in this case, it was, you know, reverting, uh, to a counterclockwise movement for both routes twenty-seven, proposed routes twenty-seven. The Belmont Route currently makes a loop in that direction, so the proposed Route twenty-seven would continue to make that loop. And for Route forty, which is the Heart Hospital Route, so that its route terminus by Heart Hospital would be equivalent or equally, you know, similar to what it is right now. In, uh, response to comments from the Near South Neighborhood Association, we'd be looking at operating Route forty, the Heart Hospital Route, every thirty minutes during peak times. Uh, and we would also be looking at several changes in the downtown area. One of them for Route forty-four, the O Street Route, you know, so that would operate in the north downtown area along its existing alignment, so that it would continue to serve UNL, uh, and this was one of, and also because there's a lack, a, lack of a, uh, left turn signal at O and Eleventh. You know, using the existing alignment, you know, to get from O Street to Gold's, the transit center downtown, was one of the things that we felt we could, I mean, you killed multiple birds with one stone.
And if I could, I'm sorry to interrupt, but, um, I just want to make clear, this wasn't so much, we weren't hearing from UNL students, we were working, hearing from people who worked or employed at UNL or near there that were going to have trouble getting to their employment, correct?
Yes, and this, this is one of the things for that as well. One of the other things, and I neglected to add this, you know, uh, talking about the Heart Hospital Route, we'd be looking at interlining it, and it's in essence a fancy word for connecting the route to either Routes forty-two or forty-nine. So every person getting on along the Heart Hospital Route would have a one-seat ride to UNL, which was another one of the things that was requested. So folks from the south end that have a, would have a one-seat ride, or include those on the thirteenth, uh, court, you know, Route thirteen, to the proposed Route thirteen, which is Thirteenth Street, be connected to Route twenty-seven, you know, and that would be routed past UNL, so that these, you know, the folks on using the Heart Hospital Route, as well as the third, Route thirteen, would have a, you know, would not have to transfer to get from where they live right now to a job or school at UNL. And this was again, in com, in response to comments that we heard, uh, as a part of this process. Some of the, you know, one of the other changes we looked at was on the West A Route, and it, one, one of the comments, uh, one of the things we're looking at here is to continue service to Lincoln Industries, uh, as is served right now by the West A Route, and also extending this route to Southwest Thirty-Sixth Street to try to capture additional riders. So that is a brief summary of the eight different changes we looked at, you know, between when we last, you know, presented the preferred alternative and now, and all of these changes can be done within the existing budget.
We also had, uh, changes to the phasing, uh, did you want to speak to those changes?
Yeah, we had, uh, you know, a multiple-phase plan associated with this, and, you know, the, the, one of the big questions that came up was, you know, how do we balance, or, you know, that you had asked us, it's like, the public said that evening service was the most important piece, and, you know, the concern, you know, the, you know, making sure we balanced what the public had said was most important with ensuring that, you know, the recommendations were a success, that the riders would respond to that, was one of the things we, we looked at doing. So we revised the phasing plan of phases one and two, you know, so that it's a, I guess you could call it a compromise, so that the, the highest, you know, ridership routes, uh, for, you know, we'd be looking at extending those in phase one, two hours of evening service, by two hours, as well as extending the evening, the midday service or adding thirty-minute midday service on two routes, you know, in phase one. And as part of phase two, have the remaining routes that did not have extended evening service, have evening service in phase two, and the other, you know, high productive, you know, higher productivity routes gain midday, thirty-minute midday service as well. So rather than going, all routes get evening service first and then all, in phase one, and then all routes have, uh, improved midday service in phase two, try to find a common ground so we serve the most riders as a part of phase one, and then have phase two, you know, to complete that picture. The remaining phasing, I believe, is identical, you know, uh, in terms of, you know, from what you've seen beforehand, including, uh, evening service, uh, you know, express services, uh, Sunday service, or, or, the phasing should, is about, is the same.
Phase three, it looks like, is the Sunday service, adding Sunday service.
Yes.
And so, as I understand it, the phasing, uh, if we get the funding for expansion phases one or one and two combined, that those changes can be made with very little problem to the alternative as it now is presented, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and, um, because they mostly have to do with time and putting extra buses out there, is, would that be accurate?
That's accurate, yes.
And then I just wanted to clarify one more thing, thank you, with regards to the, um, alternative. This also includes a plan to, uh, address those safety needs at Northeast High and the other high school, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Other questions? Leary?
Can you tell us how you did it, you know, we've, you've rephased some of it, but, um, without increasing the revenue, can you talk a little bit about the, the process you went through to achieve these changes?
Yes, uh, we basically have, have moved a little bit in, from a planning phase into an operations phase, where we have been out on the street, timing routes, and looking more carefully at what we can and can't do, making sure everything works, um, just as we had planned it, and, um, and that's where we found we did have extra time on the West A. We want to be able to serve more people with that, uh, route change. And then with, uh, the Route forty-two and forty-nine extension, being able to combine that with Route forty and have a triple, um, interline, so to speak, um, we found that that was workable and still within, uh, a budget-neutral plan. So it's really been kind of fine tuning it, getting it to the point where, um, we're very, very confident with, with this plan, moving forward.
So, no concerns with doing the triple interline, or, is it, is it commonplace in other cities? Or do you feel confident that this is achievable for us, then?
This was one of the big questions that we had, you know, we needed to go out and check, and we've gone out and repeatedly, I mean, from a ti, timing check perspective, if it works, we believe it will work. And this type of interline is used in other places in the country, and I have personally used it in other places in the country as well.
Okay, thank you for that reassurance.
All right, other comments?
Still one more question, actually.
Yeah, okay.
So, just to build a little bit on, um, Cindy's statement about, about budget. In previous hearings, we, there was concern among all council members about whether or not to cha, make changes now, to delay changes to the budget cycle. Can you talk to us about the timeline for these changes and how they will be seamless with, with regard to any changes that come forward during budget?
As I've said previously, we need about six months to be able to implement these changes after a decision is made to be able to put bus stops in place and make schedules, public schedules as well as driver schedules. And so right now, we're looking at an October third start date for, uh, these changes. That still gives us adequate time to, to make the changes. Uh, it's also ideal because we're going into summer, that's a good time to be putting posts in the ground and, and making bus stop, uh, changes as well. So, um, the, um, there may be decisions that again, eh, enhance the service as part of the budget process, um, and that, uh, would time well with that October third start date. And, uh, it's really a difference of adding additional employees. And what we typically do when we hire is we have a list of additional employees that we can, that we can pick from or call from, to be able to put them in place. And so, it's any, any additional enhancements above the preferred alternative, we feel comfortable in being able to put those changes in place, um, with the budget process as well.
So hitting that same October timeline and making it seem somewhat seamless for the public?
Yes.
Thank you.
Cindy, did you have another question?
Yeah, I would like to move that we amend the plan that's currently before us to be replaced by the new, uh, revised preferred alternative and the documents, the phasing documents that are included with, with that. And I would like to say that I appreciate all the work and meetings that these gentlemen have taken with several of us in order to work this out.
Just to understand your motion, you're attaching this to the plan that's out there?
Uh, yes, I'd like to attach it to the plan and actually, I guess, um, this is the plan that's going to go in place. So we have a report and plan, so we, this would take the place.
Just the revisions.
Just the revisions, yes.
So, you, you want to attach it?
I want to attach it and, yes, and adopt it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Seconded by Roy, discussion. John?
For clarification, now we do have several documents before us, could you identify which one you're addressing?
Believes?
Yes, the Lincoln Transit Development Plan revision, along with the, uh, phase report that, or the phase suggestions that are right behind it.
Right, so is that attached to any of these amendments we have?
No.
No.
Those are something separate.
I think she's doing that in place of amendments one through five that were drafted before.
Just wanted to declare, clear.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jane?
Well, I just have a, a comment. I, I want to thank you both for working as hard as you have and coming back repeatedly before us, but more importantly, working with all the, the focus groups, uh, Councilwoman Lamb was very ki, kind and gracious in, in organizing because I think they were essential to, to providing the amazing feedback that we got from those who use the service the most. And, and I think we, we need to keep in mind that there were, there were some trade-offs in this whole process and some, uh, that we hope are painless, but, um, you know, taking away two buses certainly from Arapahoe College View, but more importantly, enhancing further areas to the south that are employee hubs, uh, by Walmart, by Super Target, by Supersaver, to really have those buses go further south, which is where the city is growing. And certainly, those buses on the east side along Eighty-Fourth, that really are the future growth of the city as well. I think those are some of the best changes that have come from this whole process. So I just want to, to commend you for that, and I think we're, we have a plan that I'm anxious to, to see get implemented, and I think, uh, the people that use the service, we want to continue to have feedback once we get it implant, implemented to make sure that we are going in the right direction. And then the other trick that we need to discuss is really to see if we can enhance the funding, to, to really enhance those other phases that I think will really make a bus service that, uh, will keep our city moving forward in the right direction.
All right, Leary and then Carl.
I guess I just wanted to also, um, see if you have any response or input to the motion to amend that's coming forward. Do you want to discuss that first?
If you don't mind.
Yeah, I'd give you a chance.
But am I out of order in talking about it, uh, when we are, have the attachment revisions?
Vote on that first.
Let's vote on that first, and then we'll continue discussion. All right, we'll call the roll on the amendment, uh, that attaches the plan revisions.
Okay, Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
And if I may, um, I know Carl wanted to speak, but can I, can I talk about an amendment first before we go there? Okay, so.
Want to move the amendment?
Yeah, um, I would move to amend, uh, the resolution betwe, in, with a new paragraph between six and seven that says, "Be it resolved that the Star, StarTrend Advisory Board, the mayor and the city council shall review the transit development plan, final report from time to time, for possible modification based upon community changes such as ridership patterns, including changes in demand from traditionally underserved constituents, new data, technology, major employers, land uses, economic conditions, and/or changes in transit funding. As warranted, the StarTrend Advisory Board and the mayor will recommend to the city council propose modifications to the transit development plan, final report, and its related funding and implementation strategies." And the reason I'm doing this is because we don't know what's coming in the future, and my experience on this city council is, there's been a lot of development in the last two or three years that, uh, has happened that nobody could have planned or predicted, and by doing.
So you can keep talking.
Yeah, by doing this, uh, we kind of leave our options open. Uh, and I know there's other people out there that would like to see changes in the transit funding. That recognizes their concerns as well, uh, but I would appreciate somebody moving that for me and seconding it, uh, and then having a good discussion on, I think it's.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Seconded by Carl and Leary, and, uh, I guess I did something, right? I appreciate your support on that amendment.
I was just hoping to get some feedback from staff, based on if you've had a chance to look at this mic and can respond to it. Presumably you have some plan to come back to us anyway, but, but this is going to codify that, and can you tell us maybe how you envision that happening?
Yes, in, in a nutshell, we, what we have is the transit development plan, and now we're going to put those, that service on the street, and how do we make modifications from here into the future? And, and that really goes to the, the section eleven, uh, of the plan, which is the, uh, transit development standards. And, so what we will do is very closely monitor the changes that are going into effect on October third. We collect data on everybody who gets on a bus, gets off a bus, and where that location is. We take that and put that information into our service standards, we monitor on-time performance of routes, we monitor, uh, the speed of routes, how, how effectively, how fast are they, how direct? And, and then plug that in, and once a year, we, uh, go through and, and look at any modifications that need to be made. We really do that throughout a year, but we make changes to the system once a year, sometimes twice a year, uh, and, um, make modifications based on that. And we, small changes, we will take to the Transit Advisory Board. You know, if we have a very minor, you know, one-block change, something of that effect, we will take it through that process. Um, it first goes to an operations committee on the Transit Advisory Board, then goes to the Transit Advisory Board, for, for decision on that. Uh, major changes that we anticipate, um, uh, coming forward, we probably at that point would want your feedback on any major changes. And so that's a little bit of the description of the process, anything you want to add, Thomas?
I, I, I think it is absolutely essential to monitor the success of this, and, you know, one of the things you'll find is certain things exceed your expectations and certain things do not. And knowing when that is and when to take action is absolutely essential. One of the things we typically, you know, suggest is that eighteen months after, you know, a major service change, and you are looking at a major service change takes place, you take a look and see, you know, did everything work as well as it is? You know, eighteen months is generally the time the system has had ti, you know, the chance. a major service change and you are looking at a major service change takes place, you take a look and see, you know, did everything work as well as it is? You know, 18 months is generally the time the system has had time, you know, the chance to mature, that, you know, folks who are going to start using the service generally begin using the service in that timeframe. So, you know, that would, to me, that is one of the important cutoff dates, you know, not cutoff dates, but, you know, evaluation dates. You know, at that time, we should know how successful the implementation has been.
Other questions or discussion? Carl?
Yeah, one, I suppose one of the potentials that might be out there is, is there's talk of, of a, a new community college campus in an area that doesn't have a lot of service right now. So, if, if something, you know, that significant were to be decided upon and built, then obviously we would need to provide service for that. So, how do, how do we make that decision? How does that happen?
The, so we, with any development, we typically talk or are brought into the process with that development review so we can anticipate and provide comment on modifications that we might be able to make, modifications that we wouldn't be able to make, and, and comment at that stage in the process. And certainly, we can, if, if a plan requires a budget amendment, we can bring a budget amendment forward if it happens in the middle of a budget process. Otherwise, we would look at building that change into the budget process as we, as we went forward. And so, yeah, there's definitely some give and take. And again, we look at modification by modifying a route, restructuring a route. Are we going to pick up more passengers by restructuring the route than we currently do? And, and that's the type of things that we look at in those circumstances.
Thank you. Other comments, discussion, questions? All right, let's call the roll on the amendment, and then we'll move on to the main item.
No, I'll have amendment after that.
Okay, Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Roy?
I'm going to do something that Teresa doesn't like. I'm going to make an amendment number three from the dais. It's a very simple amendment. It will say, "All Startran bus stops shall be designated as no smoking areas."
Second. Seconded by John. Discussion.
Sounds like a good idea, I'm just curious for feedback.
Carl?
Yeah, I, we've got experts here that deal with buses a lot more than, than most of us do. So, how does, in other communities, how, is this okay? Is it a problem? What do you, what's your experience?
Several other west coast agencies have implemented this policy before. I'll be honest with you, I have no idea how the enforcement of this works. You know, so, but, you know, I know Seattle, I believe San Francisco are two that immediately come to mind, you know, where there are, you know, no smoking rules associated with it. I know, I can, I can speak to Seattle, you know, simply because I was there when they, you know, the, this passed. It was in relationship to a much bigger smoking or, you know, smoking restrictions that included bus stops as a part of that. So, you know, and I don't, you know, I, I don't have anything else I could tell you that.
Okay, thank you.
Could I ask a question of our city attorney? This is a resolution. Is it enforceable as city policy underneath the resolution? Or is this something that would need to come back in the form of a ordinance? I just don't want us to do something here that, while I appreciate Roy's, I mean, I completely agree with it, I just want to make sure if we're doing something that it's enforceable.
Well, it would be part of the transit plan. It would give the Startran the authority to enforce it around the bus stops. It would, it puts a bit of a burden on the bus drivers to enforce it. Does not make it illegal from the criminal perspective. You're not putting into, into the ordinance saying that you can be arrested and fined if you're smoking around a bus stop. So, to that extent, I'm sure I've kind of blurted, but that's kind of what you've done.
So, is the general policy, if a bus driver pulls up onto a bus stop and there's someone smoking there, they can tell them to extinguish it, and that's the extent of the contact?
Right, and, and they can post no smoking signs, so it puts the public on notice. And, and how these are generally enforced would be self-reporting. You're going to have other bus riders complaining about it and asking for action to take place.
And we can, we can always come back later and put it in an ordinance if we have to.
Yeah.
Exactly.
I appreciate.
That would be an evolution that would, you would go through to see how effective or ineffective it is. And if it's ineffective, then you start looking for, how do we enforce it or make it clear to the public?
Great, thank you very much.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Okay, so, the way that the motion reads is that it would, "All Startran bus stops shall be designated nonsmoking," as nonsmoking. So, does that mean that we have to put it on the signs or that we are, because it says "shall," or that we?
And now, nothing's free, and we understand this, but I have been told by a citizen who rides Startran, and they check this out. And according to the website, the Department of Health and Human Services of the state provides free no smoking signs. I don't know if they will provide that many free, but.
Well, and they may not be.
You can always column on it.
They may or may not be whether durable. But, what, what's your question, Cindy?
Okay, so it says they shall be designated, does that put a burden on Startrans to designate it on the signs?
No, it doesn't.
Okay.
I think it, it's up to Startran operationally on how to implement this. You're saying that it shall be, you're giving them that directive, but I think it falls on Startran operationally on how they're going to implement and enforce it.
Okay, thank you.
Carl?
Just definition-wise, it's bus stops?
I, I, "All Startran bus stops shall be designated no smoking areas."
Okay, so, so a sign on the street is a bus stop, but a shelter is maybe different?
Also a bus stop.
So, everything?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what people are asking me for.
Go ahead.
One of the, one of the ways that this has been looked at or defined, and I would, you know, I don't know the exact wording, is something along the lines of within 25 feet of a posted bus stop, or within 10 feet of a posted bus stop, or any shelter, you know, that needs to be, you know, that needs to be included as a part of this. And that's just simply, again, pulling from examples from the west coast.
Do you know if, does it include vaping? I mean, does that, I'm sorry, I don't mean to make this more complicated, but really, is that, are you looking at that as well, or?
Vaping?
No.
What my, what my suggestion would be, maybe because of the hour, is you can pass this as part of the transit plan. It's not the, the most logical place for it to be, but it definitely represents a sense of the council where you are today. It may make sense to come back with a resolution that more fully defines issues like, how do you define a bus stop? How many feet, for example? Whether or not that includes vaping? That might make sense as a follow-up. But what you could do today with your resolution is clearly express the sense of the council that this is appropriate, and it won't take us long to put together a resolution and bring it back for the council.
What if you say, have a friendly amendment just say, "Within a 10-foot perimeter of any bus stop." And it's just a policy, it's by complaint basis, but I think it would give passengers and others the opportunity to point out to fellow riders, and gee, how about going down the street or down 10 feet?
Well, let's say 15.
Okay, 15.
As long as we're winging it here.
I think just move ahead and then see what happens. I think the intent is there, and hopefully, the citizens who patronize will be understanding.
So, just to clarify?
Go ahead.
Can I, thank you, I want to clarify that I know what we're amending, that it would say, "Within 15 feet of any Startran bus stop and/or shelter shall be designated non, as nonsmoking."
Yes. Very good script.
I have a question. So, 15 feet, and I'm thinking of a bench on the corner with a bus Stein, and that bench may be in the public right of way, but 15 feet from it may be someone's personal property. Are we doing this? I just want to think through the entire thing before I vote yes on it, even though I support 100% what you're trying to do. I just want to think a little bit further about it because I'm thinking of Sumner Street where there's someone's grass.
I think they'll be happy not to have to pick up the cigarette butt.
That's just true. This is true.
And, yeah, and I don't think, just like they said, Jeff said, it's up to Startrans to decide how to implement it, and I don't think we're going to probably have bus drivers chasing people off of lawns for smoking, so.
How about I commit to come back, work with Jeff, and come back later with the, the whole package? This just, this expresses our intent.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
So, how is it going to read that we express, express our intent to make bus stops and bus shelters nonsmoking?
Cindy just read it great.
Yeah.
Yep, Cindy just read.
Okay, all right, that satisfies me. Any other discussion or questions?
I have one of the statements.
I'm, I'm sorry, we're, we're not in a public hearing, we're in a voting session. All right, let's call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, on the main motion.
I have something to say on the main motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to start with saying, I really appreciate everything that's gone on with the council, with Startran, with the mayor's office and all the cooperation. When I got on the council, it was summer of 2013, and I went to Startran and started talking about CNG buses and a plan for moving our bus service forward, leveraging it into someday being a real mass transit system. And I pushed and pushed, and it, this is not just the culmination, it's, it's the beginning of the, of the culmination of this because this goes on for a number of years. And I really appreciate everything everybody's done, and it's awful fun to see some, see a vision that I had come to be, so.
Carl?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I likewise appreciate the involvement of, of my colleagues and Startran and, and the citizens. You know, it's, this is not a, a public hearing on this issue. We've, we've been there and done that, but you're here and, and appreciate your, your support. And what we've heard is, is consistently, I think, across the community, the, the desire to, to do more, you know, to really provide more service in the community. And, you know, one of the, one of the big gaps I think we've learned about is the fact that we don't provide Sunday service. And, and there are people, working people, people that are international students, people that don't have cars, and, and that's their day to do things, and, and they need that. So, so this is a, I think it's a great starting point, but also, we're going to have to look at, at other options as we move forward, so, thank you.
Cindy?
Thank you. If I could call Mike up just one more time, Mike Davis. I'm really excited about a lot of the changes. One is I'm very excited that we're going to be offering service to people out on East 84th in the corridor. I think that's really important. Plus, it brings citizens, gives them the ability from all over town to get out to the Advent Center even if they're bus dependent, so I appreciate that. One of the things that taking the routes out of the neighborhood has, has straightening them up, while it makes them more efficient and more reliable, one of the things is there are still some folks with mobility issues that see kind of this, maybe a worsening situation. And so, we have visited about that, and I know that, Mike, we've talked about Startran and the Handy Van, and we have now six months until this is going to take place, that there's going to be these changes. What can folks who think that these changes have affected their ability to reach a designated bus stop, what can they do between now and then to help make this transition easier for them?
A good question. The, so we have people with different or varying degrees of disabilities, and if your disability now with the changes, you're not able to access a fixed route bus stop, then you would become eligible to use our Handy Van service. And the pro, the process for using Handy Van is to become certified through the League of Human Dignity, and they will actually look at the disability and, and make sure that, yes, this person is not able to access the fixed route bus, or under certain conditions, they're not able to access the fixed route bus. And, and then they're given that eligibility to, to use Handy Van. And Handy Van is, is a complement to fixed route bus service. It's a, basically a door-to-door service that we provide. About 60% of it, we provide in-house, and about 40% of that service is contracted out. And so, contacting the League of Human Dignity, they can contact Startran. We have information on the Startran webpage, and we're, there's links right at the bottom of the city web, website to go directly to Startran. And so, yeah, contacting us and/or contacting the, the League of Human Dignity directly.
And so, do we have, as a city, do we have input into the criteria for people to qualify for Handy Van service in the city?
The criteria is actually designated by, I believe sometimes they have, most of the time, they receive a doctor's recommendation, so it's really a medical professional that weighs in on whether a person's disability qualifies them for that service.
So, anybody with any question or concern should start contacting those folks right of way and get something from their doctor if they need it.
Yes, absolutely. And there is, yeah, that's probably the best route to go.
Thank you very much.
And I also wanted to thank all of you for participating in the public meetings. We've had the majority of you, even in this, this last phase of public meetings, participate. And I also wanted to thank Brian Pryner, who has been the project manager over this, seeing all the details are taken care of on a daily basis, and also thanking our contractor, Nelson Nygaard.
All right, other discussion? Leary?
Just say thank you again to the folks who came out and made their voices heard. You mentioned, Richard, that you had a little voice. I think you had quite a big voice, as did your colleagues, and it was, it was wonderful to have Carl bring this forward for appeal so that we had more time. Carl and Roy spent a long time on the Startran Advisory Committee. Cindy initiated the community meetings that were very valuable, and the department was responsive. It's a, it's a really nice thing to witness, how things can work in Lincoln and serve the public, to find a hybrid compromise that's getting something done, that's improved and better for, for the people who use the bus and for people who maybe don't use the bus but now will.
All right, any other discussion? All right, call the roll on the main motion.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Resolutions on first reading are 28 through 32. Ordinances on first reading are items 33 and 34. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda and not plan to appear on a future agenda may do so at this time.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. My name is Kobe Mack, appearing on behalf of the Lincoln Independent Business Association. I'm going to be brief because it is really beautiful outside tonight, so I'm ready to get out there. Yeah, two weeks ago, you were debating the Stormwater Bond issue, and I came and testified. And one of the things that I talked about was making sure that we secure the federal funding for 56th and Fletcher, that that was very, very vital, and it was important. And we were hearing from your staff, in fact, Ben Higgins of the Public Works Department told the council that if you were to delay the bond issue past May, that it, quote, "increase the risk of losing leveraged funds." He further noted 75% of the project would be funded by the federal government. He also noted that the only reason we have the opportunity for this money now is because, and I quote, "Someone else couldn't get the matching funds." In other words, another city couldn't get the matching funds. On Thursday, I met with the Lebo Board of Directors, and they asked me to come back to speak with you tonight and encourage you to get the funds, to secure the federal funds. I suggested two weeks ago that we look to the city reserve, which the last report we had from Steve Hubka was that there's 1.9 million in the city reserve account, and and that we tell the federal government that we have the $400,000. Let's not wait to see the outcome of this election. Granted, our city has, as far as anyone can remember back, has always supported and voted for these bond issues, but let's not wait. And during the last 12 days, sometime during the last 12 days, the city did receive a letter, and I'll give a copy to the clerk tonight, from the federal government, uh, saying that we have been approved for Phase 1. And it says, "The federal funds will be released, uh, in the amount of 585,000 for the development of preliminary engineering and design to determine the project's entire eligibility." It says, "The non-federal match requirement of 195,000 will be provided through local funding." So, again, we're here tonight. Um, th, this project was originally supposed to happen back in 2012. However, federal funds went away at that time, and we're, we're saying, let's not risk losing the millions of dollars in federal funding. Uh, we encourage you as a council to act and act very quickly, to make sure we secure and don't lose, uh, these federal funds. Uh, I understand it's, it's bold, and it's gonna take quick action, uh, but we think it's, it's very important to help northeast Lincoln with this flood, flood control project. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions?
I have questions for legal counsel, but not for Mr. Mack.
Okay. Well, thank you, and enjoy the weather tonight.
Let's not hold up other folks that like to speak.
That's fine.
Hi, I'm Jane Swabode, and I invite you to a paradise on earth. The basement of every college in the world has had abducted women that were raped every evening by a communist. These women need to be rescued. Multiple trap doors have been put in every high school since the 1960s. Ogallala High School has eight trap doors. Bobby Kennedy oversaw new high schools and new college building plans between 1960 and 1968 for drug dealers and communists to stash, stash drugs and corpses. 2% of high schoolers went missing at, at school since the 1960s. Potentially every child has been molested by a Soviet and cocaine teacher from Iceland Christ to Portugal Christ to Greece Christ and in Russia Christ. Every child in South America Christ, Central America Christ, and North America Christ has been molested potentially. Molestation causes a child to have D's and F's for a year or so because of profound hurt. Take your child out of school to heal at home. Start a homeschool with Christ. Soviets have tried to give HIV to children and teens this way. Have only yogurt, coconut products, honey, and jelly. And sing to God every evening for a cure. Don't touch or drink water or have tea. I wrote for the Healthy Times, uh, in June 1998, uh, in Tucson, Arizona, about full spectrum light as a cure for multiple sclerosis. Multiple sclerosis is most common in Finland and least common along the equator. My oscillating eyes, nystagmus, ended immediately with full spectrum light. I notified over 40 scientists. The American Medical Association in 2003 stated sunshine or vitamin D are preventative for multiple sclerosis. Four-fifths are anemic women with multiple sclerosis, so have iron pills. The substance with the most vitamin D is cod liver oil. Have cod liver oil on the skin and by mouth. Cod, uh, excuse me, uh, blue, blue pleurium tea for, is for the anemia, and lotus tea is for the melanin. Have Melissa powder for HIV and for German rubella. The World Health Organization, the National Institute of Health, and the Center for Disease Control have given germs out in their vaccines. Pregnant women can have Melissa tea with the fever and large nodes, uh, lymphs on neck, pink rash beginning on the face, and red whites of the eyes for rubella. Women in labor that have HIV can have Melissa oil in the birth canal with a natural sponge with dental floss string. State senators passed Bill 294, rape a civil remedy last spring 2015, so rapists don't go to jail. They do not have a genuine concern for entrapped and abducted women going from state to state. According to law, 294, state senators want women raped, entrapped, and abducted. You can check the, the, uh, the Bill 294 at the state Capitol. We're across earrings to not get raped.
Dick, you have the wrong color.
Very good, very good. I never, I hope I got this up right side up. Uh, we'll see when she switches it over.
It's coming.
There it's coming, okay. Well. Thank you, I'm, I'm gonna pull this mic over. I want to talk to you a little bit about transportation, but not about Star Trans. We've got that well taken care of. But, I was dismayed when I read in the Lincoln paper that Mayor Beitler had put in a grant for a test pilot project for autonomous cars. Uh, I don't know if he talked to you guys about that, but it took me completely by surprise. I have concerns about that, simply because, uh, I, I did a quick study on it, and it's immature technology, it's dangerous, it's flawed, and I am not real happy with the idea that the mayor volunteered the citizens of Lincoln to be human guinea pigs for an experiment like that. Just to give you some ideas of what's going on, uh, on St. Valentine's Day, one of the autonomous cars was driving down a freeway in California. There was a transit bus next to it, and it sensed an object in the road ahead, and it thought that the lane next to it was clear, and it sort of left and into the transit bus, and there was a collision. Th, they've been testing these vehicles, and it's really kind of scary, the whole technology, because the Google car, the Google car doesn't have an accelerator, a brake pedal, or, uh, a steering wheel. When you're in that car, you're at the mercy of the computer. Now, are we gonna have computers that are gonna be so sophisticated that when the autonomous car with no driver is going down the street, and all of a sudden, what we have is we have a situation where there's a grocery cart loaded with groceries and a baby stroller with a baby in it? Is that computer gonna be smart enough to discern which one it's going to hit? Because it knows it can't stop in time, it's gotta pick one or the other. There are a whole bunch of, the city attorney's office is gonna have a field day if we have autonomous cars, because, for example, if an autonomous car runs a red light, who gets the ticket? Who goes to court? Who pays the fine? Against whom do we assess the, the points on, on the driver's license? Are, as a state, as a city, are we going to have autonomous cars where there are only non-driving passengers in there? Or are we going to have drivers in there? Will they be able to override? Uh, there's just a ton of questions, and I throw this out to you because I suspect for too many years, uh, you're gonna be faced with these kinds of questions. It, it, the technology seems to be coming. I think it's about 10 or 12 years away, uh, but it's something that probably Lincoln will face at some point in time. And personally, I like my own, own system here, you know, I, I didn't know, I, I remember the Jetsons. Remember how they got around in the hovercraft?
One minute.
Thank you. And, uh, uh, I didn't have any of my old comic books, but I went down to trade a comic, and I found a Jetsons comic book, and of course, the illustration that you have on the overhead is, in fact, one of the, the Jetsons cartoons from the comic book. So, I think it's a good way to sort of end the session, and, uh, yet, I, I am serious about the, the idea that this is something about the future of transportation, and we probably will need to be concerned about it. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Just like to say, we didn't get the grant.
Yes, yes.
But I'd also like, before John gets the, the floor here, I'd like to say, uh, Happy Pi Day, and wherever you are, Happy Birthday, Albert Einstein.
There you go.
Seeing no one else coming forward, Mr. Chair, I would move for adjournment, as well as wishing everybody a Happy St. Patty's Day on Thursday, and go celebrate, do it safely, and, uh, there's a little bit of Irish in all of us, I think.
I have wanted to ask city attorney something about one of the comments, if that's okay?
Oh. I think we're, since we're not in a public hearing, we're out of order, you can maybe ask it, uh, off the mic.
Okay.
And I didn't hear a second, oh, thank you.
Thinking by Roy, call the roll, please.
Christensen?
Yes.
Askridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.